Well, good morning. Welcome to our September fifth board meeting. We'll start with introductions. Did I put it on the box? Better? Oh. You're bouncing around the room. Okay. We'll start with introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Good morning, Zan Ojero, Commissioner. Welcome to the first day of Corvallis Schools.
Vance Carney, County Council.
Rick Red is. Rick Rager, Interim County Administrator.
And in the room.
Debbie Sessions, Finance.
Mary Lee Cawthon, Finance.
Teresa Stead, Finance.
Jeffon Armstrong, County Sheriff.
Brian Lee, Emergency Engineers.
Man Ray Peace, Administrative Specialists.
Ben McFatz, County Health Service.
We will all enter and help start.
Lea Dax, Corvallis State and Brooklyn Center.
Can you place a community member?
Allison Hawgood, Corvallis State and Brooklyn Center.
Sean Collins, Unity Shelter.
Janie Luth, Unity Shelter.
Or Goren, Public Information.
Eric Milo, Board Recorder.
And do we have anybody joining us online?
It's Rayanne Gleason, Contract Lobbyess for Benton County.
Daniel Reddick, Solid Waste and Water Quality Program Coordinator for Benton County.
Mail Hall, Public Member.
Debbie Palmer, Member of the Community.
All right, welcome. Mixed up any announcements? Very none. We will move on to the agenda. For a couple of reasons, we're changing, excuse me, changing things around. We will postpone four point one till approximately nine thirty when Commissioner Weiss will be here. So we will start with. And we have a public, two public hearings that we will start after nine o'clock this morning. After eleven o'clock this morning. So I think start with the consent calendar. Item number six.
Do we have any comments for the public first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Still working. Still working on the agenda. We will start with, after public comments, start with the consent calendar and then proclamations. See how we're doing for time at that point. All right. We have one person signed up who wishes to comment this morning. Sean Collins come up to the desk and I think if you punch the button, the little green ring turns green.
Morning Commissioners. I'm here today to give you an update on Unity Shelter's operations and just to pose a few questions about things that I saw in the packet for today's meeting. So beginning June twentieth of this year, Unity Shelter has been operating in a combined shelter for men and women in the formerly women's only room at the end shelter. We've also reduced operating days of the Hygiene Center. Cut back, we're only doing overnight shelter instead of twenty-four seven. And we've backed off a lot of staff. We've got eighteen people that have been removed from regular shifts. Many of those were laid off, some went on the on-call status. This has allowed us to reduce costs considerably, but we continue to seek funding to restore operations. Our current combined shelter has just twenty-six beds for men. That's down from fifty when we were operating the men's shelter at full capacity. And we've got twenty-seven beds for women. We got some recent generous support from I H and C C O, but it's not enough to really sustain us for full-time operations. So without new additional funding, we won't be able to sustain shelter operations through the full winter season. And all of our programs frankly are at risk. Unity Shelter is actively seeking funding from many sources, including the shelter component of the House Bill fifty nineteen funding. And it seeks to reopen the men's shelter at full capacity and expand the beds available to women to at least fifty, should we receive adequate funding. I want to recognize the work of the Coordinated Homeless Response Office. Many of the county staff are in that and Grant Writer Libelisaki Winter. They led efforts to develop responses to the House Bill fifty nineteen funding opportunities. They did a great job of gathering community input on priorities, details on needs, and they partnered with agencies like Unity Shelter to develop a current state set of needs and to submit requests for funding. And this kind of collaboration is really notable and super appreciated. Also want to acknowledge the partnership we've had from Benton County to support operation of Third Street Commons Shelter and the Safe Place Transitional Housing Program through the ARPA dollars last year. And a big thanks to Rick Rager for working through that with us. Rick and team have done a great job of briefing you on the recommended options for the C I P and remaining ARPA funding. But in reviewing your materials for that packet, I just had a few questions that I'm just hoping will come up during the presentations. Their Emergency Operations Center Plan that's recommended creates a new asset that will surely be of great use in the event of a large community emergency. And I can see where that would be helpful. But I hope there's going to be some discussion of how that space can be used when it's not an emergency. That's a very large building. The even the smallest, most modest plan there is roughly the size of the entire men's shelter. And so it'd be a shame to have that building basically wait for an emergency that we all know is not exactly predictable. So discussion of some of those alternative uses might be helpful. Also, just the, some comments on the ARPA support. So the reduction of ARPA support for services supporting social services in the community went from two point eight million in the last round of funding to two hundred thousand in this round. And it just seems kind of out of step with commitments made last year by Commissioners to support social services with these funds. My question here is about that reduction and also just a question about how unspent fin, funds by last year's recipients will be, will be managed. It's not clear from the packet whether those contracts are going to be extended or will they be returned for reallocation. ARPA and other COVID-related funding sources have often been directed to supporting organizations impacted by the pandemic. During pandemic, demand for services to, to those experiencing homelessness and housing instability has grown substantially. But the, and the demand continues to be high, even though the pandemic is officially over. The, I guess my, my question or my request of the Commissioners might be to just consider the redirection of additional funds to support projects at organizations serving homeless individuals and families in our community. We've all been hit pretty hard by the shift, a rather dramatic shift in state funding. And I think that it's, it certainly was no surprise that a change in funding would come. That really was emergency money that was far above what was normally allocated. It takes some time to shift. And so our organization in particular is going through a lot of changes right now, trying to figure out how to be sustainable going forward. Certainly nobody on our board or staff is interested in not having shelters this year, but that's the genuine risk that we face. Any questions?
Thank you. Is there anyone online that was, wishes to comment this morning?
Yes, I, I would like to comment.
Okay, and I forgot to mention to Sean, but if you could keep your comments to three minutes or less, it'd be appreciated. Go ahead.
Are you ready for me? I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, oops. Okay. Good morning Commissioners. At one of your recent meetings, Darren Nichols spoke earnestly about the asset that is the Coffin Butte landfill. It's clear he cares about the county. I can feel it. And I know you guys care about what's best for the county too. We all do. That is why Darren's words chilled me to the core. The landfill is actually a liability. When will you start to see that? When will this start to sink in? It really appalls me how the county goes out of its way to ignore and overlook this. I know why you do. You see it as an asset because the money it brings in. It generates unencumbered money for the budget. And I appreciate that part of your job is to see that the county has money to take care of its needs. But please take your blinders off and your earplugs out and listen to people other than your staff. Listen to the science. Even money-wise, the landfill is only an asset in the short term. In the long term, financially, this landfill is a liability. And it is an extremely long-term environmental liability. This landfill will be a liability for generations to come, long after it closes. The landfill is a liability. And you know what? A bigger landfill is a bigger liability. So let me repeat, this landfill is a liability. Please stop thinking of it only as an asset. This landfill is a liability. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online want to comment this morning?
Yes, I would.
Say your name, please.
Yes, good day Commissioners. I'm Ken Eklund. Benton County Resident and Chair of Your Disposal Site Advisory Committee. And I'm here talking to you today about the draft request for proposals for the Sustainable Materials Management Plan, which staff will ask you to finalize later today. I'm asking you not to do that because that draft contains, well, let's just call it an inaccuracy. On page twenty, there are two sentences in rather tortured language that purport to say, well, it's difficult to say what they purport to say, but they have the numbers ninety-nine point two percent and zero point six percent in them. I'm asking, that's page twenty of the R F P. I'm asking you Commissioners to not approve the draft R F P without asking staff if they've double-checked these sentences for accuracy. Is this a fair statement? Is this what the report you're citing actually means? Have you run this by the people at Oregon D E Q who wrote this report? Staff needn't be concerned that Oregon D E Q is too busy to talk to them about it. They weren't too busy to talk to me about it. Five people ended up on the email thread, including Cat Rhodes, our Regional Specialist. They're concerned whenever someone attempts to use their data to produce perverse outcomes. That's David Adaway's phrase for it. David Adaway is the lead author of the D E Q report. Holloway, Holloway, I'm sorry. In this case, the perverse outcome he was talking about is an attempt to minimize the climate damage coming from Coffin Butte landfill. Which brings us to the real import of my request. At last Tuesday's meeting, the Commissioners and Darren Nichols took great pains to say that the upcoming S M M P process would take an honest look at the liability side of the landfill equation. But what you actually were doing, even as you were saying that, was tilting the playing field in the opposite direction. Right off the bat, you're minimizing the liability of climate damage from the landfill in the very R F P. In your last meeting, you also announced plans for a listening session where county staff can hear the public's ideas and values for the Waste Management Plan. Yet, as staff will tell you if you ask, the Republic has been questioning this inaccurate takeaway from this D E Q report for over a year now. It's been like whack-a-mole. So unless the public sees some kind of commitment, otherwise, I think we can assume that staff is planning the same sort of performative listening as what happens now. Staff pretends to listen and then pursues their agenda, even if it's perverse. I'm asking you Commissioners to not approve the draft R F P without asking staff to verify this problematic statement with Oregon D E Q. You can also ask staff to forward you the objections to the statement that they've received, which are substantial. Better yet, just ask staff for a statement that isn't in tortured language. You say you're going to look fairly at the liability side of the landfill and that you're going to listen. Well, here's your chance. You can start right now.
Ken, can you repeat, please, what page of the R F P that number is found on?
Yes, that is on page twenty of the R F P. It's under section B, which I think is materials cycles, something like that.
Okay.
Got it.
Thank you.
It's the first two sentences.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online that wishes to offer a public comment this morning? Do we want to go with the revised schedule or? Then we'll go to the original schedule. Four point one department requests examination of the capital improvement program and the American Rescue Plan Funds Discussion. Rager wearing several hats this morning.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm actually now feeling more comfortable in my normal place. So again, as on your agenda, we, we've scheduled about ninety minutes this morning and we'll see how, how that goes. Obviously, I'm not planning on talking here for ninety minutes, but certainly want to leave enough space and time for discussion. I think as we've talked in the past, we may want to continue this discussion into a future meeting. But again, wanted to at least frame it up for you here today. I also have a lot of people that you can see back here, a lot of experts that can certainly come up. There are some specific questions on these different items that I want to speak to. So I'll, I'll start this morning, just in terms of a little background, just to kind of ground us. Much noise here, am I too close? So just in terms of framing this up today, what we're speaking to is seven point two million dollars, which as we all know is money that was dedicated for our capital improvement program as well as our, our ARPA dollars or our funds for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-five binding. And as you all recall, this was dollars that were suspended back in February prior to the budget. We did get it approved within the twenty-three, twenty-five budget, but clearly the discussion that we all had was, there's a lot of things going on. We had at the time measured two dash one forty, as well as both the state and federal legislative process. We wanted to see what the outcomes were going to be as it related to the resources. A lot of moving parts, obviously, and I think the right decision was to wait and see what that outcome would be. Clearly, we know now that with the, with the failure of measure, we are now more certain in terms of the dollars that we have. We're fortunate enough to get thirteen point eight million dollars from the state legislature. Eight point eight, that was for our courthouse and continuing to beat the state match. But we also got additional five million dollars of appropriations specifically for the Emergency Operations Center. We also are in the middle right now of federal appropriation bills, while they're not allocated. When you get an appropriation bill, we all know, usually a pretty good chance, and we have another three point one. At this point, that is in appropriation bills for the others smaller, but yet very important projects moving forward from a capital standpoint, from the Neuro Health Center, as well as the Alpine and Alcee Sewer District. It's, is another project. We have the Sheriff's Office Regional Public Safety Radio Infrastructure. So see all this, just, you know, we've, we've been successful. Clearly, we've seen some, some good appropriation, both at the federal and state level. But obviously still a lot of capital needs. So just as, as a bit of a background, once again, in terms of framing up this discussion, when we talked on July eleventh, full setting meeting, we talked a little bit about a variety of things. And so this is my, to try to frame up big buckets of issues. Number one, first, first and foremost, and you all talked a lot about the Emergency Operations Center. Clearly, we're on the heels of, of getting the five million dollars. We also have another one point three million dollars of federal resources. So how are we going to move forward with that? We talked a lot about children and family service-based needs. Really running out of space, we are going to have to address this issue relatively soon. We did put into the on measure one and a half million dollars unfortunately did not get, so we are going to have to deal with that particular situation. We have the Capital Improvement Program. We did dedicate three million dollars, as I mentioned to you before, we had applications to move forward. We had over four million dollars worth of applications that had come. There was the American Rescue Plan Act. Again, this was, the intent was to use those dollars specifically as we had used in the past. Clearly, we didn't know exactly what that would look like, but certainly that was dollars, at least from a planning standpoint. We are in the middle of this courthouse replacement project, which is a very, very challenging project as we move through. And as we know, with cost increasing, it's going to continue to be challenging in relation to this. And then finally, one of the things that was very important to us during the state legislative session was ideas around the Homeless Navigation Center. So those were, again, the, the buckets, if you will, of, of ideas and thoughts that we talked about on July eleventh. My responsibility was to do my homework, come back to you and provide you a little bit more information based on some of the things that, that you had asked me to gain information on. So what I'm going to do now is kind of go step through each of these to talk a little bit about, I mean, some of the, the homework, if you will, that we've done. I'm sorry.
Sorry, can I interrupt? Someone online said that they cannot hear very well. Side.
Sure. Okay, is that better? All right, I'll, I'll try to talk as closely to this as I can. So what I, what I plan on doing is going through each of these areas and tell you a little bit about the work we've done together as a team and also give you some ideas in terms of recommendations on how we can move forward. So I would, at this juncture, like to ask Brian if he wouldn't mind coming up and joining me because he's going to be able to talk a little bit about some of the some of the recommendations here. He also might be able to respond to the question that came up earlier in terms of use of space in relation to public comments. So I'll, we'll lean on him a little bit when we get into some of the uses. But let me just start by this particular subject, start with the resources. Again, we have five billion dollars from the state legislature. This is lottery-backed bonds. This is a new source for the county. It's dollars that we will not see until March of twenty twenty-five. We have already received agreement from the state, so there is all intent in terms of that issuance. But again, money won't be available for us to actually spend until March twenty twenty-five. Doesn't mean that we can't use, we can't expend and get reimbursed later. There's allowances for that under lottery-backed bonds. But, but again, I just want to make sure that there's clarity in terms of the color of the money here. We also have one million dollars of a congressionally delegated spending grant. This is the federal dollars that we got several years ago. And I'm wanting to remind everybody, we have an expiration date of those resources on nine thirty of twenty twenty-four. Brian reminds me all the time. And, and then certainly he's right, and we need to be really thoughtful about how we can use it. I think both he and I believe we're set up well in terms of using those dollars. both he and I believe we're set up well in terms of using those dollars, particularly particularly in the A and E phase. But still, it'll be here before you know it. And then, of course, we have to provide a county match in relation to this, and I forgot to apologize. So I I think this is where I I'm going to kind of turn it over to Brian a little bit because he speaks a little bit to the optimum EOC features. And I I think this is important as we went back and started talking about various options we discussed. Do we put it out on the north side? Do we look at a rehab? What are the different options? I think it's, of course, is important to first start, what is the optimum features that we need? So I'm going to turn it over to Brian a little bit to speak to that.
Thank you, Rick. Good morning, commissioners. For folks on land, again, my name is Brian Lee, and I'm the emergency manager for Benton County under the sheriff's office. Just a quick recap on what an EOC is and does. It's really a coordination hub for information and resources. During times of activation, of course, in response, it's really coordinating that interaction between first responders and community needs and then resources at the county and state levels as well and within the region. The other side of that, of course, is the ongoing effects of recovery. So within recovery, the process that takes months to years on end after a major disaster, that's all funneled through the EOC and involves a lot more of the local departments and community partners to effectively coordinate a recovery process. And then before all that, there is, of course, the planning process that can take place in the EOC as well. So just some quick optimal features. If folks who don't know during the COVID pandemic, as well as the wildfires of twenty twenty, we actually used this building right here that we're in as our EOC space, including this room, the lobby, the staff space next to us, and then about a third of the upstairs floor as well. So the main feature that's needed is a large meeting room that can be split in half. We need multipurpose, multi-use space, not knowing the nature of the disaster that we might face or the staff that we might need to call in. We need to have that flexibility. Right now, Benton County has one of the most progressive EOC teams in the state with about eighty to a hundred staff that we can leverage during an emergency. So flexible and adaptable spaces, number one. Of course, it needs restrooms, kitchen, possibly a shower, but really just needs space that's usable for staff to be there possibly overnight or for extended periods of time. The other part of that is multiple conference rooms or multi-use rooms. Four to six is sort of ideal from what we found. We would need to house a joint information center, coordinate public information, a call center, the command staff, and then, of course, a briefing space for other meetings and other breakout spaces as needed. With any EOC, you must have a radio room. You got to have some way to communicate, not only with dispatch, first responders in the field, but also with the state. And that includes some of our local amateur or ham radio operators as well. I would be missed if I didn't mention storage. We have a lot of things, equipment and things that we would need to store, and we obviously don't want that piled up on wire racks surrounding the walls. We would like that to be stored away neatly and orderly. Again, so that space is multi-use. There would be some office space in there mainly to have some sort of oversight over the building to make sure it's functional when needed. And then this is really important. It needs to be ADA compliant, and we'll talk about that here in just a minute with our other space options. And then parking accommodations, somewhere between forty and seventy spaces. We need enough space, not only for the staff, but if we do other non-emergency-related events out there, we would need space for that as well. So there's essentially three options when it comes to site. And I know later Rick will talk a little bit about this, but site one is at the fairgrounds. Site two could be at the old board of commissioners' office there at two oh five Northwest Fifth Street. And then the other one is construction on the north side there. So a couple of quick recaps on the option one, which is located at the Benton County Fairgrounds. The area that was originally sort of penciled out for the space is over on the far side of the parking lot there by that sand pile nears that the bike trail that's there. Some of the pros, obviously, are land we own. It's co-located with other large event spaces, which is always useful, and there's plenty of parking. With that, though, the co-location creates another problem, and that's, of course, that folks go there during emergencies, which could be a pro or a con. There'd be still an increased cost in drawing utilities and do site improvements. There's still transportation issues, particularly with flooding under that underpass there by the train tracks on reservoir. There's not really room for expansion, lack of parking during events. So obviously, OSU football, fair, carnivals, et cetera, that would take up that space. There'd be bike path impacts as well. And then number bullet point number seven here on the con list is the possible fiscal impacts. Once we build an EOC space based on the federal grants that we've gotten and the way we wrote out the request to the state, realistically, we can't leverage this site to generate revenue. It would be a major issue, especially on the federal side. So there's no way we could rent out the space. The other downside is it's not located to the sheriff's office dispatch or any other of our county operations outside of the fair. So it's kind of an in-between, but again, it's a little bit out there. So it's not near Calicooya. It's not near other things. And then security of our assets. We obviously don't want to have to put up a ton of fencing with barbed wire around it to keep things secure. But the more stuff we put out there, the more security issues we could have with that. So option number two, of course, is renovate the old VOC building. I know this was explored in depth when they were looking at the Crisis Resource Center. Again, an advantage is the land we own. There's connectivity there. There's utilities in place. It's close to kind of everything there centrally located with the sheriff's office dispatch, et cetera. One of the biggest cons, however, is that it's not ADA compliant. So it does not have an elevator, and a lot of the spaces itself are not ADA compliant, so that can pose a lot of issues with just utilizing the upstairs space. So an elevator would need to be installed. Additionally, EOCs must be held to higher seismic grading specifically, and that building is not, so it would have to be seismically retrofitted as well, which again increases the costs and decreases the actual footprint. So a lot of that space would be lost. And then parking constraints. There's a tiny parking lot that would not quite accommodate if we were to have a major activation. There's no real room for expansion, just looking at the location and the bounds of the actual property itself. There's not really secure storage for the trailers we have and other assets. And then realistically, that building could be leveraged, and I would defer more to Rick on this one as another asset to be utilized for something else, some other space, sold, whatever it is, it's another asset that then would be taken off and used for this EOC. We would still need to figure out office space during construction, and realistically, the building footprint does not really meet our needs. So it would be a real true pull renovate or tear down, and it's likely, according to Gary Stockoff, over ten million to actually renovate that appropriately. So again, a huge dollar amount associated and a lot of other cons with that. Option number three, which is sort of been discussed previously. Again, it's land we own. We could build from the ground up, so we can actually customize it, build in pre-planning, actually think about what this county would look like in twenty, thirty years and start planning ahead. It allows space for expansion if needed, or if we ever acquired additional grant funds, plenty of parking and plenty of multi-use spaces. A lot of advantages there. A couple of cons are that it's not located next to the sheriff's office directly. Currently, there's transportation issues, but if bus lines went through there, there could at least be public transit. There's still some other issues there related to the major catastrophic flooding and a few hazards associated with that site as well. And then the other thing is security. If it's just a courthouse in EOC again, we'd have to figure out a way to have some of the assets that it would be stored possibly outside the facility secured. And then the environmental historical preservation process, depending on what how we're using funding, can take a lot of time, like a year, even just get the approval to start. So sometimes those are little bits of issue. However, I will say with the FEMA funding we have, the plan is to use it for design and engineering. So we avoid that environmental historical preservation requirement.
Yeah, so I'll I'll jump in here a little bit. Brian and I will tag team this a little bit, but I I think, you know, when we look at all these, obviously, you can see there's pros and cons across the board. And and so some of the things that that we we've talked about, and Brian and his team, and I know the sheriff, and I would certainly like to invite the sheriff or any thoughts that he has on on this as well, but, you know, the site location obviously is 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 key. That's that's one area that we want to look at. Obviously, you heard from Brian, all of those have a bit of a challenge in terms of of site location. But but certainly, I think Phil, option three sort of lends itself probably the best as it relates to the three timeline and cost of constructions. I I really want to point this one out because that ten million dollar figure on option two, it it sounds funny to think, okay, well, you can rehab, but the amount of cost that you're going to put into rehab, something like this, particularly for seismic and and the elevator, it's going to be huge. And so funny enough, it's it's cheaper to to construct brand new. So I think that's something that we we certainly want to be able to look at. You know, additional county investment that that is needed in in relation to any of these. I mean, I think all in all cases, clearly, option two and option three is going to require some form of additional county investment into this, which is why we're here today to talk a little bit about what does that look like? I think as it relates to option one around the fairgrounds, you know, the certainly, we want to continue to make sure that the building meets the optimum that Brian spoke to. I think that, you know, there's likely a a cost there that, you know, might be a little bit more mitigated as it relates to like you don't have some maybe some of the site development things that you would have on the north side. So again, that's something we have to consider. You know, to include all emergency services offices and design, that's obviously a critical piece is to making sure that we have all the emergency services designed into one office area. And then I am Brian mentioned this planning for the future. We need to be thoughtful. As we put these things up, we we, you know, it may be the easy answer is you put it in one place or the other, but are we thinking about the future? What is our vision? Or are we going to be in thirty years? I think that's something that we really need to keep first and foremost as we talk about this. So so with that, I think, you know, again, applaud Brian and the undersheriff, the sheriff, everyone has really kind of pulled together here to talk about, okay, what are some of the preferred options? I think ultimately, we all felt that option three was essentially the the preferred option. The one thing I'll tell you about cost is that it's it's hard to really pinpoint in these days in terms of it's a it's a moving target. So I I chose to be a little bit broader here and give you ranges because everybody was like, exactly how much square foot are you going to get? Well, you know, it depends on what they ask you. As Gary Stockoff would, I'm sure, attest, it's it's a bit challenging. So what we chose to do is look at three different models for your consideration. One, I wanted to say, okay, what if we just use what we have right now in the six point three, which is dollars that's essentially in our that's going to render you about forty-three hundred square foot to up to fifty-one. The second model, eight point eight, and again, this range is anywhere between sixty-one and seventy-two hundred square foot, which, you know, that again starts to get, you know, it's everything's going to have some pros and cons, and we'll look at design. Brian can speak a little bit to the advantages of each as we go through these. And then, you know, there's model three, and I'm not going to call it the Cadillac, but it certainly is, you know, a a nice version that gets us up to eighty-five hundred square foot. Brian actually has a a even a more one with a bigger square footage, but that one really starts to get out there in terms of of cost. But I think in conversations with the sheriff, with Brian, I think we all believe that all three of these are, you know, again, models that could work, but obviously, one's going to work better than the other. And what we want to do is be able to share with you at least in each of these sites, you know, what what one we think from our standpoint would work the best. One thing before Brian starts, I, you know, all of these designs, I mean, he had multitudes of designs out there, so I don't want to like kind of paint him in the box, say, this is exactly what what it is, but this rendering kind of gives you an idea of something that would be in the range, and he'll be able to bring out the pros and cons to each of those.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. I will talk swiftly through these designs because, again, these are just temporary renderings into dialogue with Paul and just kind of penciling out what we would think is ideal based on the square footage. So obviously, this is the model one, the six point three million, using the funds we have currently as it stands. This is sort of the layout. It it definitely has just enough office space for staff. However, if you notice storages, there's only two storage closets, and that would be it. So the multi-use space there at just shy of twenty-two hundred feet, we would could build things in there to store. But again, it really limits the storage specifically in the overall multi-use space. So could in theory have a dividing wall and separate the space, but again, the space starts to shrink down very quickly when you start adding an additional storage. Yep, no, that's fine. The next model here, model two, obviously expands it a good amount. We add in that additional conference room space back there. And then our storage space expands out a little bit as well as the conference rooms on the backside. And again, all these things can be squeezed and moved just a little bit placement-wise, but space-wise, this is what we wanted. The other key feature to this one is with the office space, it could be sectioned off. So if there's something else going on or the the space is being utilized, we could still secure the offices. We have a lot of very expensive and sensitive radio equipment and things like that so that we maintain a secure space on the backside there. So that's sort of our ideal model space-wise. The the model three, which is the ten point four million, this is where the square footage gets quite large. This square footage is starting to look at what we use regularly for our monthly trainings as well as our quarterly exercises. And this space, square footage-wise, is actually scaled down from the amount of space that we used in this building during COVID. Now, assuming we don't have to have a COVID activation, I know April's in here, knock on wood, this space would be adequate for almost any other emergency activation outside of having to do the physical distancing. So again, this is kind of that highest level Cadillac model, so to speak. The offices are still quite quite small and conservative, and our storage space increased just a little bit. But again, we're going to be very tight, but the focus is having multi-use space and flexible spaces that can be leveraged and variety.
So again, just as a reminder to the board of commissioners, that the vision of JSIP, well, the original scope we had was a eight thousand square foot building. So again, the option that Brian is speaking to would again range up to seventy-two hundred square foot, but certainly, I think, well, maybe not the the Cadillac, as we as we said, certainly would be a very huge upgrade in terms of what we we currently have, obviously, but would be very manable and be able to hit a lot of those considerations going forward. So as it relates to next steps, and again, we're going to obviously talk about a lot more stuff here today, but the and this is the first, but clearly getting an idea of what the preferred site is, we need to have a direction in terms of what we're going to do because obviously, the things that we've done here is a first step. I think it's a good first step. It gives you a good range of of the different types of options, but we're going to need to decide so that we can start moving and then begin really kind of jumping deep into that planning effort. As I have said, you know, our dollars for the federal money runs out next September. And while that's a year away, it's still, you know, takes time to get these things put in place. So having a direction and preferred alternative from the board is is going to be important here as we move into this, so we can at least get those dollars spent. Nice thing about timing-wise from funding is the lottery-backed bonds would then kick in in the in twenty twenty-five, and these dollars would be as I, you know, again, you'll see when, not to jump ahead to my recommendations, but more of an up to amount since there is not necessarily, this is a bit fluid. And as we start to move forward and get tighter and tighter, we'll be able to bring conservative number as it relates to the option that we would suggest, which is, again, as a reminder, model two that's here. So with that, I would just real quickly like to invite the sheriff, if he doesn't mind, if there's any comments he would like to make in relation to what you've heard today. He's been a a great partner and a part of this process with the undersheriff, but I just want to at least give him an option to say a few words.
Thank you for your time this morning. Thanks for hearing Rick, and I'm I'm really proud of Brian. I think he did a great job. They keep calling it the Cadillac model. I call it the ideal space for operational capacities, just so we are clear on that. But I I I agree with with Rick. Two or three were are ideal out at the at the current campus site that we've selected. As far as that, if you have any questions, Brian's still here. I'm here and Rick's here.
Thank you. I'm assuming we can ask questions now.
I'm sorry. You're welcome to ask questions now on the emergency operations center, if you like. Or you can just take it all and then ask questions in whatever you prefer.
Okay, I'd like to ask as we go since it's easier to remember them that way and may have more at the end. With respect to the issue that Sean Collins brought up about the use of the space when there isn't an emergency going on, Brian mentioned one of those uses, and that is that we already conduct a lot of training exercises and not just for Benton County, but we we are a regional hub. And so that space is likely to be used on a regular basis, but it the other question is, might it be available? And I think I've heard some preliminary discussions for at least the warming and cooling functions that we need to provide as the health department on occasion.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Drill. So a couple, a couple things of note there. It could, in theory, be leveraged for a warming and cooling site location. However, there's still the However, there's still the, you know, liability and staffing issues of county operated sites. And one of those things that comes up and comes to mind is that that thought process of leveraging the fairgrounds, various locations at the fairgrounds as well as another site option. Again, pros and cons there. And last winter, we ran into a lot of dialogue and discussions about some of the liabilities associated with running those kinds of shelters. So it's not to say it can never be used as that. Certainly, it's within the allowable parameters of the emergency operations center. I would say it's, it's far from ideal. If it was just a short term temporary thing, that's one thing. The other side of that is considering the locations within the city and more centrally located here downtown near the library and some of the other facilities that could be leveraged a little more in cooperation with the city. But again, it could, it could potentially be leveraged in that capacity if needed, but then it would be unavailable for if that incident expanded for emergency operations.
Yes, I understand that it would all have to work out timing wise, dependent on what else is going on in the community. And liability issues are not limited to governmental entities. All of our nonprofits face those same liability issues and more.
I had a follow up on that liability piece. Is the liability the same if we were to use the EOC location as it would be at the fairgrounds? Or are you saying that there's a difference?
It would be, it would be the same type of liability. It's more about the staffing risks and and things like that. There's also a couple of different models to how different entities like to operate those kinds of sheltering or center. Under if, in theory, you're right, if this facility falls in the sheriff's office, we would follow all the best practices as aligned with FEMA and Red Cross for mask care and sheltering. And so that model looks quite different.
More expensive, in other words, than a contract facility?
A lot, a lot. Staff.
And less flexible. Okay, thank you.
I guess my, so my next question is just in considering the different models, is there one model that provides more value to the county over time than the other ones? Because I know, you know, upfront costs are something that are very important, but I don't want to build something that's going to be behind the eight ball and, you know, outdated the minute that we, that we make it.
So I guess I'll, I'll take that one commissioner wise. And I think that we, we, as a collective group, I think we feel the third option is, is by far the the best in terms of meeting a lot, really thinking more visionary out. Option two, really, again, you're hamstrung in terms of what you're able to do. And like I said, the cost is already going to be much more expensive. I think building out at the north side provides the most flexibility in terms of things like expansion, obviously. And, and so I think that one really fits well. Option one, which is, you know, to the fairgrounds again, it's, you know, we own the land and perhaps we could see some cost, some lesser cost in that particular model. But again, I think that there's a lot of your much further out, as Brian described, in terms of emergency services. So I think that, you know, from our standpoint, the third option really was. And then, of course, we have the three models. And we felt the middle model there, model two, was really the one, again, you know, it, it meets the needs. It really, and Brian talked about the storage, I think that's another important piece. But at some point, though, we do have back to the ability to expand as well. And so that would be something similar to what we're trying to do with the district attorney's office, be able to build expansion into the site and you have more flexibility there.
Thank you. I guess I'll just say I, at this point, I'm, I would go with the north side. That has been our goal is to get everything built out there. We're not going to have a new jail and a new sheriff's office yet, but someday we will. And that's, you know, the vision of where it's going. So that would be my preference unless the sheriff's office disagrees with that.
Agreed. Similar question, but I, I think it's important that we look to the future. Use that phrase, you know, what do we want things to look like? A couple decades out and what we're doing now, how does what we're doing now fit that vision? And I appreciated the sheriff and I'll have him repeat instead of Cadillac.
Ideal space for operational capacities. I just came up with that.
Well, yeah, and, and I think that that's more accurate than talking about luxury vehicles. Appreciate that. And just follow up on Commissioner Ojeda's option number two. It's relatively close to fitting the budget. Quick arithmetic, that's, we have over seventy percent of the funds in hand and so matching funds of a little over twenty five percent. But expandable is, well, we really need more, more space than that. This gets us in the ballpark. Is the model number two expandable sometime in the future to come close to model number three?
Conversations with Gary Stockoff, the, the plan and part of RFP would be a concept for how it could be expanded if needed. Again, if we acquired more funding or more funding was available, or for some reason the space was inadequate. The idea would be able to expand it.
And at this point, these are all very much conceptual designs and we have to go through that design and engineering in order to get to something that actually works.
And I would hope part of the design is looking to the future and saying, okay, this is, you know, we have two thousand square feet now, but in the future I like model number two, as long as it's flexible and can be modified in the future to meet the needs that we will have an opportunity to see what we actually need. Just for, just for fun, what, what's the current square footage of the EOC in the basement of the law enforcement building?
It's about five hundred square feet. It's a thirty ish by twenty ish square foot. One closet.
A small trailer.
Yes, correct. Trailer might be more functional because we could at least expand to the outside of it.
Move it.
Correct.
All right. Yeah, I, I think that's what I, what I had. The, the first two options. Our, our old BOC office, nice location and part of what comes with that is not a lot of space available in your ten million dollar figure for retrofitting a building and then have something that you didn't really design. You say, well, here's, here's the square footage and the shape and, and and I think the ten million dollar figure was similar with, to what mental health crisis center came up with because that at, at some point that was, looked like a viable option and, oh, we can do this for two million dollars and then oh, no, it's nine or 10, I think, if I'm remembering correctly. So you know, I assume you didn't have to work as hard in coming up with, with that number because it's already been looked at. But so the, to me, the north side just makes sense. It has space and you mentioned transit and it's, it's already in the neighborhood and multimodal paths are in the neighborhood. And so it'd just be a matter of, oh, here's, here's buildings and how to connect them to the rest of our area. I think that makes sense and congratulations on getting most of the funding needed for at least model number two. What I had, so ready to move on.
Great. So again, I want to just say special thanks to Brian and the sheriff undersheriff. Really appreciate their partnership and doing this. And, and again, while I know this is early in the process, we feel really good about the numbers. We're using our most current numbers that are in the middle of the, working on the courthouse. So I feel like we, you know, again, there's still a lot of sharpening of the pencil needs to be done, but feel good about where we're at. So let's move on to door number two, bucket number two, the children and family service space needs. So this again was a conversation that we had and I have both Damian and April here and they can Sir and Paul, I think, might be here as well in case there are some specific questions. But this one probably won't go quite as deep as, as, as the other ones, since we, you know, obviously needed to put a lot of I mean, effort into the EOC model with the commitment of dollars that we currently have. But just again, for everyone's knowledge, I mean, the health department currently requires additional space for the children and mental health. We all know that right now we have currently thirty three thousand four hundred and eleven square foot and they are outgrowing the space. And clearly, there's been, as you all know, in the budget process, there's been an increase in that because there's a huge increase in the mental health need in our community. So, so I think, you know, there's, there's the space factor, but I think there's another element that's really key to this story and it's, you know, being able to provide the adequate services for the clientele that are coming in. Because again, you can, you can, as Paul always says, you know, you can build a, a office space to actually have our staff in, but we have to really think about the services that we're providing. And so that was really kind of the, the conversation that we dove into per your direction. We really wanted to, first of all, examine the estimate that was put into measure two one forty. You all recall there was one and a half million dollars inter missed. Also recall that that was, you know, back in January, a lot of, you know, moving parts. And I think that the primary objective in, in was to make sure that we had enough space for the people. And I think again, that was a, you know, at the time, a, a good estimate. Obviously, things change, costs have been going up as we all know very well. So you have that factor. But I think the other pieces I just mentioned is that we really needed to sit down and think about the services that we're going to provide and look at that building very carefully. So, so, so we spent, you know, the last forty five days met with Damian and April, who are critical to this in discussion to really make sure that there is a good appreciation for the service needs there. Some of the things that in, in terms of doing that work, we, we certainly have come up with a revised estimate. First and foremost, the national average is right now probably about three hundred and fifty per square foot. That's what we're seeing nationally. In talking to our facility staff, we really think that it's probably more appropriate to go about a four hundred and fifty per square foot increase because there are some code requirements that need to be addressed at the Sunset Building. Another part to this, to make this work effectively, it's going to mean that we're going to need the space where the OSU extension currently is at. So that is going to be a change that would need to happen and occur. Obviously, it's a discussion we would have to have with them. It's going to require some pretty extensive ADA upgrades and similar to like Brian was talking about, our old board of commissioners offices, there's that type of work that needs to be done as well. So when you look at this, when we put this together, we're talking probably about five point three million, five point four million dollars in reality to be able to meet those, those needs. So, you know, clearly that's a much different cost than, than what we saw early on. Again, as a reminder to kind of get you from point A to point B, that was in January, cost estimates have gone up significantly in terms of construction. But in addition, that was really just sort of, let's get the people in as opposed to what are the services that are really going to be provided and really moving into that. I, I think I, you know, again, what we're seeing, putting a contingency on this, really, you're, you're looking at probably about six million dollars in total. That would, you know, be able to reasonably get staff in and also get the facility where it really needs to provide good services. Having said all that, and Damian says this much better than I, but you know, I think this really warrants a, even a larger conversation as it relates to our entire needs, our mental health needs across Benton County. And what is the appropriate structure and facilities to put in place? So I, I think that it, one way or another, we, we have to address this. There is a space need. It's either, you know, we look at potentially, you know, renting out more space to be able to meet those needs. Is this a step that we begin to take to move in that direction? But it shouldn't stop us from also having the bigger conversation back to the future. What do we really want to look like? What are really the service needs? Again, April or Damian can speak better to this than I if you have the question. But while we, I think we move, if we went this direction, we move to really centralize most of, a good share of the health department. There's still, you know, other pieces that are, are out there that probably need a much more grander visionary plan. So again, they can, can speak to that. But I, I just want to put that out there for you so that you understand investment here would be more of a phase one type of approach if, if we were to move forward. Here's some renderings. Again, thanks to Paul. He went out. I won't go through these in, in great depth. But I think, you know, we, you know, through the, the rehab, we would be able to make this work. We currently have the developmentally disabled, a development diversity program out there. As you know, through the remodel that we did, this again would be something much more extensive. So so in total, again, you know, we're looking, I, I would say in, in, in a best case scenario of about six million dollars or total, obviously, you know, you could build it like, you know, just to get the people in. I don't know if that's the kind of investment you want to make to be able to just move people and still have a variety of potential service needs. So with that, commissioners, that's just sort of the, the bucket of homework that we have done on that particular area. And certainly if you have questions for Damian or April, I'm sure they'll be happy to answer.
I think this just reinforces the need for an overall county facilities master plan. And the fact that we need to stop building ad hoc. So yes, with the growth, especially of behavioral health, and I don't think that that's going to slow down very much. I think it'll only increase. I think we need to be much more systematic in the way we're thinking about these facilities.
Took the words right out of my mouth, Commissioner. Absolutely. Yeah, a looking at, at health, the health department and CHC's coming together under the Health and Human Services umbrella. We also have so much to consider there with space needs. So I, we absolutely have to address this, this need of behavioral health. I don't know if that looks like a couple of years lease and, you know, some short session discussions to, to build funding and planning time. But my, my recommendation and hope is that we take some time to really consider some longer term planning and, and, and kind of put it into the reactionary Band-Aid approach that can get us into trouble in space wise quickly.
Health director. I'm just going to echo a lot of what's been said, but I think I want to drill down for a second as to why we're having this discussion. I think I've shared with you over the course of this last year, some of the pressure points that we are experiencing on the behavioral side, taking to the children's program. So we know right now where it's located. It's not optimal. You know, there's issues of safety, you know, there's issues of capacity. So I really want to call out the differentiation between the longer term, more thoughtful approach, in which we have to take the twenty thousand view of how we want to invest, how this is going to impact both our children's program, but the broader behavioral health system and the broader health system as a whole. So us being mindful with our funds, looking at Sunset as an amazing resource, how do we retool that? How do we optimize it? So all needed longer term discussions or processes. Shorter term, we still have these pressure points. So we still have waiting lists. We still have issues of staff safety, client safety. So we are at this sort of pinch point in which we have to do some creative retooling of our available resources. I also want to call out Paul and Gary just for their work. They've, it's been really awesome in being in really pivoting and getting us some, some preliminary discussions and solutions around this. Paul is working with us as well. I'll find Paul is working with us as well on finding additional space that we can maybe utilize from a lease standpoint. So, you know, I, I'm confident that we can move into a situation that will allow, will buy us time. So, yeah, I, I think with that, for the sake of time, I'm just moving forward to, to the next subject, unless you have questions.
I've got a couple of questions and comments. I had a brief conversation recently with Paul Walsinger, just thinking, okay, is, is the building structurally, is it worth the investment? And Paul, if I, if I got it right, you said it's a solid asset. So I, I think that's important going in, just, well, this is how much it would cost, but is it a structurally sound building and investment? And it sounds like that question is answered. Yes, I really like the, having a theme for the building. I think, you know, what Mr. Ogierow has said about planning, where are we headed? And I think this really makes sense as even thinking about the juvenile department being there. I mean, they're not exactly in the center of this discussion, but the way in on kind of prevent problems, which seems like is our goal. So it's, I appreciate the explanation of why we've gone from a million and a half to close to 6 million. Well, because we did a better job of designing in addition to price escalations. But the, this is a, like a more thoughtful design and approach than we, than we had originally. So that's, that's what, what I had, but I'm, I'm a big fan of investing in prevention of those dollars. Running investment can save you in the, in the long run. I appreciate getting the design firmed up and a better idea of the cost estimate from my reading of the state legislature. This project fits right in the part of, of programs that may get some state help. Just like we've done on some of the other major construction projects, multiple funding streams and the county has to do our share, but there are partners out there that can help this along. That's what I had and appreciate the, the information.
Commissioner, and just to speak to your point about the co-location of services, in addition to that, we also have a great opportunity to us across the street with DHS. So you're really starting to talk about how we can brave resources around families so they can, to use a simplistic term, have almost a one-stop shop in terms of their, for themselves and for their clients when they come through the door. And that really is in terms of best practice.
And we'll see if we can do better at public transportation, getting people to and from these services. All right? Thank you.
So Mr. Chairman, if no more of the questions, I'll move on to our third item here. And if you don't mind, I'm going to invite my staff person, Mary Lee Hopner, to come up and join me, hold my hand in case I get anything wrong here. So we're going to move in now to the, the CIP program. So again, as a reminder, $3 million typically allocated or appropriated in the budget was once again, but this again was dollars that we had put on hold. We did run the application process back in March, just so that we had an idea of what we were, what we were dealing with. So what I'm going to start with off with here is, first of all, and I think I mentioned to you this at the last time we met, but we had a total of 4.5 million dollars. That's basically what the total request was for dollars. That was 35 different projects that came through, a combination of five different departments. Mostly, as usual, you'll see that the fleet facilities and road are obviously big users of CIP, so is NAEP. And then we also had a few projects from redevelopment, Sheriff's Office and assessment. So that's, gives you just a little overview of what the starting place, four and a half million dollars. So what we talked about last time was, you know, we have a CIP committee. Let's bring our CIP committee and put them to work, have them help us and help you a little bit as it relates to prioritization. So what we talked about as a group with the CIP committee was, first of all, we needed to review the estimates for accuracy. So one of the things is we get these applications in, we get them in February, things change. Sometimes people put applications in and we already have funding committed for it or the dollars. So we needed to really do a fine tune analysis on that. I think another thing that popped up in the CIP, and again, I don't know, I think this is a conversation that's happened historically, Commissioner Malone can speak to this better than I, but we had a few projects that were asking for a lot of money, one of 1.5 million dollars. So you can imagine if you did that, half your CIP would be gone. And so what, what the committee really felt, we needed to really ensure was we're able to spread these dollars out. So a half a million dollar limit in terms of the grant would seem appropriate. Obviously, we would need to find out from the project sponsors if, if, if the 500,000 was put in, is this scalable? So that was a conversation that we needed to have. So the direction that we got, Mary Lee and myself, was, you know, really needed to, to, to look at the criterion that, and you talked a lot about this at the last committee. So we tried to really think through, not only from the point of view of the committee, but also some of the things, and Commissioner Ogierow, you spoke to this a lot, was first and foremost, you know, projects that, that we replace or that they demonstrate is, you know, we're not, no, no longer adequately able to provide quality services. So we're actually preserving the existing asset. Obviously, safety and health issues. If particular capital improvement is really addressing that, that should rank higher. Project is providing a solution that either reduces greenhouse gas emission or provides energy efficiency. Again, another high priority for this board, and we wanted to bake that into it. Revenue generation, is there ability for this capital improvement? If we make it, are we going to be looking at some form of revenue generation for other services for, for the county? This was a big one and Commissioner Ogierow, I'll, I'll channel you a little bit, shovel ready. So if, if we're going to make these investments, are we going to hold on to these dollars? And trust me, I've seen in this program to where we've had, things have held for 24 months and we haven't had investment. That's no shame or blame, it's just it happens. So are we really ready to go with this in the next 12 months? So that was another really big requirement criterion that we wanted to put in place. And then finally, match. That's something I think that the program has traditionally used, been used for, if we put this money in, are we ensuring that we're really getting some home of federal dollars? So those, those were the, the criterion that the committee came up with. And so we as staff then went back and looked at these projects a little closer. What we determined was there were three public works projects that were in the initial list that we could actually take out because we had resources elsewhere. To be, so back to the point is some of these applications come in, but there are other resources that provided or actually had already been committed. So we were able to take 620,000 off of that. There were two projects, one in community development and one in NAEP that were in excess of 500,000. So in both cases, we moved those down to the 500,000. We had conversations with NAEP, which was specific to the Jackson-Frazier Boardwalk. And that is a scalable project. So certainly if 500,000 went in, it would provide dollars to help leverage other monies that we might be able to do, maybe not at the scale that we initially thought, but certainly could do it in, in phases. The community development project was for permitting system. And this project, I wouldn't say is scalable because obviously it's sort of more of a one-time type expense. I think in addition, and we'll talk about this from the criterion, we'll be having conversations with you as a board, you might remember in the budget, one of the things that we wanted to invest in community development was a broader conversation around the permitting and how it impacts the department. So I think from our standpoint, from a shovel readiness standpoint, there's some work that needs to be done and then perhaps we can back and visit that. So the results were, and I should also mention, there were some small adjustments that Mary Lee was able to work through, it was about a net increase of about 72,000. So at the end of the day, we came up with about 2.87 million dollars. So we got it down a little bit and that was 32 projects in total. So here's a really busy chart. I'm not going to go through all the details for you, but it gives you a list of every project that represents that 2.87 million dollars. Again, our CIP committee has gone through this, gives you a little bit of an idea of what the, the project is itself, where it's located. And then you will see priorities one, two, three, and four. So I'm not going to tell you there's any magic algorithm that we put together, but it was essentially how many criterion of those that I spoke to, how many were they meeting? And obviously the more you meet, the higher the priority is. So that was really the, the essence of trying to get into that prioritization of each of these different areas. So as a committee in this, I, I'm, I'm happy to say that the entire CIP committee supported this idea and recommendation to you was that give consideration to allocating 1.75 million dollars to the priorities one, two, and three, that you just saw on the previous page. We're not saying no to the others. We're just saying that right now we're going to focus on the priorities one, two, and three. Priorities four will still be there, then we can revisit those when we get to that place of maybe more money, maybe other projects fall out. You're going to see when I get to my recommendation, we have a lot of uncertainty going on right now. And maybe when some of that uncertainty goes away, perhaps we have a clear picture and we don't need reserves, go forward. So again, it's not a no, but it's, right now, we need to put these on the hold. There's also, I should mention, there are five other public works projects that we would also be suggesting to delay the start time because they're sort of mixed into some of these other considerations that you might make. In one case, we are potentially getting a federal dollars for the Monroe Health Clinic. And some of the CIP projects is actually to do improvements to the existing Monroe Health Clinic. So let's wait and find out if we get those federal monies, then we can, you know, decide where to go. And then the other ones, well, obviously to our last topic, the Sunset Building, if there was to be some kind of major rehabilitation to the Sunset Building, that would obviously take care of some of these smaller things that you see in the CIP. But if that's going to be delayed, deferred, th- these are things that probably need to be addressed to make sure and maintain rest. So that's, that's again, again, this will all roll up into the final recommendation that we'll have for you, but that's, that's where we're at with the CIP. And if you have any questions.
Thank you. I think this was a very clear presentation. I appreciate the use of criteria to prioritize the projects. That's very helpful. I have one, well, a couple of questions. Couple of them are really basic because I just don't understand what the projects are. The state courts pool funds, and I know we don't have a swimming pool in the courthouse, but, so I'm not sure what that is. And then the zero curb project here for Kalapuaia, just wanting to know a little bit more about them and, and you know, how that affected where they ended up.
Sure. I, I'll take the first one and I'll probably, I think, the other one to Mary Lee because I think she told me about what the curb project was here at Kalapuaia. But what I can, so first of all, in terms of the, the state pool funds, that's my language, sorry about that, it's not for a swimming pool. Actually, one of the things that was requested by the, the state courts was to have some form of dollars available for small maintenance type projects that, that come up or priorities that, this was a discussion actually the former county administrator had with me early in the budget process, that state courts were feeling like there were some smaller things that didn't always fit within our scope of normal facilities. And so that, that was the intent of that. In terms of the curb project, Mary Lee, do you want to take that one?
Paul's in the back.
Paul's here, he can cut. Come on up, Paul.
The Kalapuaia building was set to remove the existing four inch curb in the front of the building and bring that down to parking lot height. And pull that closer to a micro, to a height for a foot traffic and accessibility.
For ADA requirements, especially since we have all those wheelchair parking spaces there?
Correct. It wouldn't be specifically required by the ADA because we already have ADA parking spaces available, but it would be a true amenity to the building for those people that have mobility issues that are being dropped off for meetings or whatever.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I have one question about a project that's not on the list and one that we've received email about, and that is the pavement repair for the Martin Luther King bike pedestrian path. And I know that that is in really tough shape and does present liability issues because it gets fairly heavy use. And Gary is here. Rick, I saw you looking alarmed. So was that even in, on the project list at all to start with? And why is that not higher priority? I know that...
It, it is on the list. It's, it's surface preservation.
Okay, I, that, I read that as roads in general, so...
No, we, this is money we need because we can't use the road fund.
Yeah.
Out of right of way paths. So we label it service preservation, which that path definitely is needed of preservation. So it's on there and it's prioritized quite high.
Thank you. I thought that was the road surface preservation because we have in the past invested funds for that. So that clarity is much appreciated. And will we indeed be transferring that multi-use path to the city of Corvallis once we upgrade it?
We will make another attempt at that, yes.
That would be a good idea since it's entirely within city limits.
And what we're talking about is the last item on the...
Correct, correct.
The 300.
Could be, depending on how much funds. There's another path that we need to do, but that one is the one that we get a lot of calls about.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate the clarity, clarification.
And since we've already started the current budget, what kind of timetable for, assuming this gets approved, what kind of timetable for doing the work?
We, we will shoot to have it next year. It's, it's down the bandwidth at the moment in other projects. That would be our goal, to have it underway next year.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I might just add, to kind of echo what Gary said, I think that was part of our due diligence, if you will. We will back, back to the shovel readies. I mean, obviously if there was a feeling that, you know, we really can't get this done in the next 12 months, we didn't want to continue because we know how precious the resources are right now and you have a lot of priorities to look at. So that was a very big, Gary's right, I mean, he's got a lot going on, but certainly I think we feel confident that these are all shovel ready.
Any other questions on the CIP budget? I'll just echo Commissioner Ogierow's comment. This is my third time on the CIP committee and this is by far the best process and clearest defining our needs and... There are always projects that are worthwhile that don't make the, make it through on the first round, but they're still there. And depending on how things work out and sometimes projects get delayed and we can take a look at some of the projects that are in the first three priority lists. Thank you for a nice, thank you, thank you, Rick, and your team for making this relatively painless process to come out with clear priorities.
Okay, with that, bucket number four, American Rescue Plan Act. And I'm going to invite yet another guest, Sharisa Steve. He's my grant manager. She has helped me in relation to this work. So just as a kind of background, again, from this discussion last time, we talked a lot about, you know, the ARPA portion of this, again, $4.2 million. We had that money unallocated and intention to be able to use that. Obviously, we would be visiting that each and every year, but use that kind of. One of the things that came up in Commissioner Wise, thank you for your inquiry on this, to give you a little bit more information about what do we know? And what are some of the interests that community partners have? And I'm going to say this isn't perfect, but we tried in the short time that we had to go out and do surveying of our various partners and do an email blast, try to get as much information as can. So the information you look at here, please know that, I mean, this is, again, really quick and you'd have to be a lot more precise, but at least gives you some ideas. So first, I will say that there were a total of 10 respondents that identified 21 potential projects. And I do want to make a note because it came in too late. You all have a packet on your desk from the Benton Community Foundation, and there is some alternative ideas in that as well. So I would point you to that as some additional information that they wanted to provide, but unfortunately, we just got that in late. Seven of the 10 respondents that we got, they had actually received funding awards last year. So these are, seven of those were actually given dollars. Two of the respondents are, only two of them did not, did not participate in the process last year. And one responded, applied, but did not receive funding. So that gives you, just again, the scope. You see all of the different respondents that we have. Some of them, I'm sure you're familiar with in terms of the grants that we did last time around. Some of them had multiple projects. But just to give you an idea of what we saw of those 21, about $5 million in terms of total request. What I've provided, or I should say Sharisa has provided, is the, these are the ARPA categories. So again, keep in mind, when we've put this money out, we've stayed close to the ARPA eligible categories. And I'll speak a little bit of that shortly. But the biggest area that we saw was long-term housing security. That was obviously driven by, and Sean earlier, but in terms of community shelter was a lot of interest around that particular area. And then, and so that was, that was our largest piece. 56% of these were for infrastructure projects. Commissioner Ojero, I know you asked a lot about having some interest in infrastructure because that wasn't necessarily the focus of our first round. It was very open and we got very, very little infrastructure in round one. And so if, again, investment in infrastructure is the priority of the commissioners, we had about 56% of those funds that were specific for that. Here's a little bit of information on each of these. It gives you a little bit of idea of what was put out as a potential project. Again, in terms of the total dollars, it was about 2.81 as it relates to the nine infrastructure projects that you see here. And community shelter made up 1.92 million of those three. Sean talked a little bit more specifically to those. So yeah, that's, that's just, again, the summary of what we saw in relation to the infrastructure. Real quickly, and Commissioner Wise, you also asked about update on how we're doing with existing grants. So again, as a reminder, we gave 19 total project grants last time in May of 2022. That was about $2.7 million as of June 30th, which was our last reporting period. So as a reminder, we front these dollars and then we get report, always call it back in accounting, we get reports on how they're spending those. Right now, 10 of the 19 recipients have spent their entire amount of dollars. So a little over half have actually just exhausted everything. In terms of the total funds awarded, approximately 76% of the funds have been expended by the grant. So that's, gives you an idea in terms of total. There are four grant recipients that we have on our list that have spent less than 50%. So again, just as you might remember, our requirement in our grant agreements, where everything had to be obvious. So everybody has met the obligation. We didn't, we were kind of open on the expended piece, but we are watching those closely. Obviously, we want to make sure that the dollars are used. But overall, at 76%, essentially one year in, that's, that's, that's not bad. I think we're overall relatively used. The picture you see there is actually from one of our recipients in terms of their dollars that they're putting towards for training and supporting, supporting youth. So I think overall, I would say that, you know, we've had a good success with those projects. Everybody has, has done really well. Sharisa, if there's anything you want to add and some what you've.
Thanks, Rick. So for the 2022 projects that came in, they did provide quite a bit of data, you know, story and exactly kind of what's going on with the projects they're wanting. So if you guys want access to that at all, please let me know. I can provide that to you. But really, like Rick said, a lot of the requests came in for supporting homelessness and another big one was child activities, children, the youth, and some mental stability being put into the community as well. So they all sound like wonderful programs, but you guys get to have the job of deciding which direction we want to go. And I think I can say this really, they're pretty, the people who are reaching out and stuff, they're really excited to get working on these projects. So maybe the sooner we have direction and can give them reassurances on what the county's plan is, they would much appreciate that just because we have delayed a little bit, making sure we knew about the bond and, you know, things like that. So we've been receiving some emails inquiring about where we are in the process and I'm sure the community would appreciate an update from you guys that I can give. Thank you.
So again, thank you, Sharisa. And Sharisa's been sort of the conduit to a lot of these recipients. This last graph is just more picture for you, just to give you an idea of all the recipients and kind of where they're at, they're spending. So again, this was more informational for you. Again, just to let you give an idea of what we're hearing from some of the recipients. I'm sure there's a lot more out there with a more robust survey. But, you know, with the timeframe that we had, this was, you know, that would at least give you some information to be able to help you with your decisions going forward.
I think there was one question that came in Sean Collins' presentation earlier, and that was about extensions on some of these funds. And as you say, funds only need to be obligated, but what is the kind of drop dead for organizations to use up their $20.22? So and can they, can they change purpose?
So as, as it relates to the current grants, as, moving back to his specific questions, certainly there's flexibility in terms of expend time. So for us, as we need, our requirement is obligation. That's obligation by, what is it, September 30th of, or excuse me, December 31st of 2024. So that is really what we have as a requirement of the funds. We have nothing baked in in terms of the expend time. So there is, you know, flexibility. We have worked with a variety of sub recipients on, you know, flexibility where they've changed budget categories. As long as it's, so long as it's within the eligible uses of ARPA, that's, that's the most important thing. So I would say that if there are any situations where we have recipients that maybe haven't spent down the dollars as much as anticipated, we certainly have the flexibility to be able to work with them. I think the other part of the question, and it probably gets into the recommendation, was I think thinking about extension of existing dollars that we have pledged, continuing to provide services with additional funding. And I think that's one of the things that we, as a group, talked about back is that we were very clear that there was no guarantees as it relates to any kind of extension of existing grants that, you know, whatever processes that we did choose to run, they would be all independent of each other. And we also are very clear that priorities could change. That certainly, we were using eligible terms. I mean, as you recall, we didn't use water and sewer as one of those. Decide that you want to just do all water sewer projects. I mean, those are choices that we were very clear about that could be made depending on, depending on what the commissioners wanted to do.
Okay, I guess I'll keep going if no one else has any comments. It is, our ideal was definitely to put forth 6 million of the ARPA funds as community grants. That was a position we took when we were in a much more rosy state of affairs, looking at the abundance of CARES Act and ARPA dollars and with the prospect of Measure 2140 passing. So it's very difficult to contemplate not addressing community need. But I think that we have to have a pretty robust conversation about it. And I think we'll probably do that after you make your pitch for a reserve fund this morning. So I just want to say that there is a lot of demand and it's difficult to, to know that, but it's good to know that.
Yeah, I guess I have a similar comment. And I think from some of the discussions earlier this morning, we are addressing community needs. That are directly Benton County projects. And so I think it's, we have had to, you know, reset priorities and a lot of, a lot of moving parts. And I appreciate the effort to get us to as clear fiscal, clarifying what our fiscal situation is and what projects are on the books and various funding streams. So I think I'm ready to move on to our discussion of the shiny new courthouse.
Thank, thank you, Sharisa. Appreciate that. And so we're home stretch here, commissioners. I knew this is going to be a long, a lot of information I'm throwing at you, but home stretch here. So us two areas to speak to. So first of all, the courthouse replacement project. So this, obviously, lots of discussion we had. This is not a lot of information here, but it's really more of an update for you. We, as you know, have continued to work with the state in relation to our existing courthouse project to make it balance within the budget we have. So our, clearly, you've been very clear with us as it relates to our resources that we have into it. Now have the state legislative process that it's completed, so we know how much resources this state has. We've also done a lot of work in terms of the design of the existing courthouse. I've had good conversations with the folks from the state about taking a small step backwards just to make sure that we understand the functional needs of the state courts. That doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, is it affordable? And I think part of this is first and foremost, we want to make sure that we meet the standards. The standards are clear. The standards are in agreement. And we need to make sure that we work with the state courts to meet those standards. So there's the standards, but then there is, you know, you know, what is, what is, what is, you know, the desire? What is the, the goals? Is it meeting the functional need? And I think sometimes there's a little bit of gray area in, in some of those discussions. So we wanted to at least take that opportunity to step back, make sure that it was clearly meeting the needs of, of the court, of the state court, and then again, going through it because I think it's pretty clear to us that it's going to be too big to be able to fit within the current resources. So then how do we start to bring it back down? And then understand that if we bring it down, what standards are we not meeting? So we, and I think that's, that's part of the process that we're walking through. I think I would tell you right now, that's gone, you know, pretty well. I mean, obviously, it's, it's slow. It takes time. I'm learning a lot about design. But certainly, we're making some progress. I think there's been some, some good conversations. Our hope is this week, we have a meeting and the state courts are going to be coming back to give us sort of a, you know, we had a pretty good layout of it to give us, is this meeting, you know, their overall needs? That's one part. The other part is more financial related. And you've heard me talk a lot about site development and in terms of how does the state look at that? We had a very successful meeting with the state and they've essentially agreed that, you know, our 50/50 assumption in site development is correct. Or at least that's what they would support. Obviously, you know, you have to get more into the details, but we feel really good about where we're at. So overall, you know, we're, we're at a place where I think we're going to be at a point where we know exactly what we all can agree on, where we can now have a conversation about, okay, this is, this is what you see meets the need. Is it affordable or not? Between, right now, I think we're likely somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.5, $2.5 million short. That's, and that's our side of the question. Again, that's based on the drawings that we've seen so far. Doesn't mean that those aren't going to come down or after we have a discussion. So I tell you all this just because this is continuing to be a work in progress. But I want you to know that there is that place out there that, you know, is there a risk when it comes to, you know, cost? We've already been delayed on this project. We were going to be getting into the ground this fall. Now we're not going to be able to get around to March. As I've heard the contractor say, it always kind of makes me shimmer a little bit. You know, we're losing $200,000 a month when it comes to cost escalation. And that, that we don't have the time. We've, we've got to be able to get this wrapped up here relatively soon. So everybody's poised. Everybody's working hard. But I just want to be just very transparent with you on kind of where things stand as it relates to that discussion. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm taking any questions that you might have. I'll move to the last piece.
Once again, I appreciate giving us as much clarity as we have as of today. But I think it's important on the courthouse to not make assumptions that, oh, we have, we have enough money. Probably have enough money. We might have enough money. $60 million project, it's pretty easy to be several million dollars short. And, and I think till we get things clarified with OJD and get everybody to sign off on an agreement. We have to have some reserve for this project. So we make sure that we have the resources to go forward. So I appreciate the accuracy of where we are today. And like basically all of these major projects, we will get more information, maybe in this case fairly soon, some of the others. Maybe in this case fairly soon, some of the others may take months to clarify where we're at as far as funding. But I think the courthouse, we keep thinking we have, we have the necessary funds, but we don't know that for sure. Good luck in your discussions.
We keep, we keep moving forward. So the last piece, Commissioners, and so we can get into kind of the recommendation, or at least our discussion. There are several things here. One, we did talk about, but others that have come up that I thought were appropriate for your discussion. So first, we talked about the homeless navigation center. As you all know, this was something, again, that was in the bond measure. It also was part of state legislative requests as well. And unfortunately, we didn't see resources either way. That work continues to move forward, that those efforts continue to move forward. I know Allison is here and I can just want, can't say enough about her and her effort and everything that she does for the community and really continuing to push on this, because I know it's not easy. It's a big job. And we're certainly been, continuing to have discussion with the city of Corvallis. I know they have dedicated dollars, I believe CDVG dollars, they have put in as a, as a match into the effort. We were, as you all know, the original proposal that we had in the state legislative process fell through. But there was some other efforts that went forward that we were working with the city of Corvallis to kind of determine what are some of the options, some of the things that we might be able to do to help. Fortunately, that, that too had fallen through. But I know, again, there is going to continue to be the effort to move forward and identify in a different location. Certainly, the need is there. So, so again, I just, you know, part of our discussion was just to give you an update on where things are at. April, myself have both continued to have discussions with the city. We want to stay in close connection with, with Allison and the Corvallis, make your day drop up in center. So that's something, again, I think, again, has been really important to the community. It's been really important to you all and want to put out there is just in terms of another capital consideration. I think that another, now, a few pieces that we didn't talk about. One, I wanted to make you aware of the state legislature did have $555,000, you might remember, as for the historic courthouse and specifically for the boiler and for the roof. And I believe this has been going on for some time now. But, but I think it's important to point that out because we've been talking now for a roof for five to six years. And when you're talking about roofs, those don't always wait. And so I just want to put that out there as this is another area was not in the CIP because their thought was, you know, state funding would come. Clearly, is the state going to put dollars into that going forward, particularly if they're moving to a new courthouse? You know, I think those are, those are our questions that we have to grapple with. Another piece I think is very important to note is that you all have been extremely supportive of warming and cooling centers for the homeless population and have done a tremendous job on that. We have no money. We're out of money for that. We are clearly, you know, one of the governmental organizations providing that particularly direct support. And so obviously with the cold coming up, the rainy seasons, as well as the winter, those are considerations I wanted to at least put out in front of you. It's been, I know, a high priority for everybody, but right now, the resources have been completely exhausted. The other thing, these last two, and I just want to really stress this. And we also have $3 million of funding that may be coming through the federal appropriation process. And while we're really grateful, those are three, three more capital projects that we're going to be taking on. Monroe Health Clinic that I had mentioned is a potential replacement project. We have the LC Alpine Sewer District work, the infrastructure work, which is going to be combined with the already ARPA work that is part of the Water Service District. So you have that going forward. And then, of course, the sheriff's project in relation to the radio infrastructure. Hopefully, we'll know in December if those resources are going to be committed, if the president's budget gets through. But I put all this out there for you just to say, you know, when you put it all together, we have $90 million worth of projects. When you put the CIP that we talked about this morning, you take the EOC, the Crisis Center, the courthouse, all these other smaller projects, that's a lot. And we have great staff and great contractors, but that's a lot of capital. And all of that is like in the next two to three years. So I just, I want to put that front and center, but as we think, as you think about your decisions and where to put the resources, bandwidth is something we need to be thoughtful about. And, you know, we as, we have a great opportunity here with the resources that are in front of us, but we also have to get things built, built well. And Garing and his staff are doing a great job, but I worry often just in terms of our overall bandwidth. So that's something I just want to put out there for you. So that's a good segue into, I guess, you know, our discussion as it relates to, and this is again, just a staff recommendation. I don't expect if you want to continue to have these discussions, we talked last time. Maybe this is over one meeting, maybe this is over two meetings, but this is just from my perspective and, and the staff perspective of hearing your priorities and the thoughts. So the recommendation that, you know, with the $7.2 million that we have, one thing I want to just quickly point out, when we talk about ARPA, you might remember that ARPA is, it's, it has a certain amount that has to be used for eligible purposes. And then there's up to $10 million that is called replacement revenue, basically used for any governmental purpose there is. So within our $4.2 million, we do still have flexible, if you will, dollars. It doesn't have to be used for, it could be used for any kind of governmental purpose. So that's, I think that's a good, need to keep that in mind, that some of these dollars will have to be fit into a category. Based on all of that, the thought would be to put up to two and a half million dollars into the emergency operations center for the Model 2 that you, that we went through. Now, again, I'm going to be very clear, up to two and a half million dollars. I think we would want to be just very financially prudent as we go through this. We still are very early in our design. I think we've got a good, solid estimate within that square footage range. I don't want, last thing I want to do is be short. I'd rather be over because then we can work to kind of come in under budget. The second piece that we would suggest is the 1.75 billion for the CIP projects. That's the, you might remember, priority one, two, and three. The priority fours, we wouldn't say no. We obviously would leave those on the waiting list and come back and revisit those if dollars would come. The other piece I put out here, the $200,000 for the warming cooling center. And again, I know this is a little bit, this is not necessarily in the sphere of capital, but I know that this has been a high priority for you all. It's obviously a huge community need. There are no other resources that would go into that. We're out of the dollars that we had dedicated. So without any kind of additional funding source, we would be, be difficult for us to continue to provide that support. And then, as mentioned earlier, you know, roofs always can make me nervous when every time you hear about, you know, roofs, you want, you want to make sure you're working to address those, particularly if they've been out for some time. I talked to Paul and Paul's always really positive in terms of, you know, we can always, he is always going to figure out how to make things work. And I think like with the boiler, maybe we could continue to buy ourselves some time and see if we can get some resources. But roofs don't always wait and, and I get really nervous about that. So again, similar to what we did in the CIP process, you might remember we had roofs as a pretty high priority there as well. And that really gets us to the last piece and Commissioners, and I just need to stress that there's a lot going on right now and a lot of different projects. I mentioned the courthouse project. Certainly, we're continuing to work that. Costs are continuing to go up on everything, even the Crisis Center, which has moved along pretty well. We're seeing some cost escalation there. And so I, I think it would be very prudent to be thinking that, all right, we need to get some of these projects to a place where we're taking off so that we can better assess and figure out. Then perhaps you let off a little bit and you can release some of that. But I'm just very fearful with costs continuing to increase that if we're to allocate everything, what happens? Because we, as you know, we've invested a lot of money. We've issued bonds in terms of our courthouse project, so the flexibility isn't there as much as it used to be. So it's, I think, important that we be very prudent as we move forward. I know that there are discussions around legislative opportunities and I support that 100%. I think that when we talk about the Children and Families Sunset Building, I think that that, as Commissioner Malone mentioned, is a good target. I think absolutely we need to go after dollars. Typically, of course, the state's always going to be looking for a little skin in the game as it relates to that. So that's another consideration you want, might want to make is if those are approaches, what match are you going to use? What dollars? So I know this is a lot to think about, a lot to throw at you once, but I feel like this is a way of trying to be, really set the priorities in, in motion, try to hit the priorities that have been highest. I always say this is the hardest part of my job because you don't, you know, everything you hear is, it's all important. You know, the great ARPA projects that we have, I can't, you know, I've been involved from the beginning. I love the work that's happening there. There's huge amounts of needs, just are. Unfortunately, there's only a small amount of resources. And so, and this is the best recommendation at this point, but certainly open to your direction, discussion, next steps. And I will stop.
Well, I am, I was very disappointed when I looked at the list to see just how much demand there was. But I believe that the plan that you've put forth with these particular recommendations is a very sound one. I've been hearing about the courthouse roof since before I was elected and have testified at the legislature on behalf of those funds. But unfortunately, the legislature has not put forth any capital repair funds for courthouses in the last three biennium. So we're at the top of the priority list that's recommended by the Oregon Judicial Department and the Association of Oregon Counties. That's not good enough, you know, if you don't get any money. So I think we need to take care of our asset regardless of how it gets used in the future. And we know that the courts and the DA's office will be there for at least the next two or three years. So I, as much as I'd love to spend more money, I, I think the reserve idea is a very good one in order to be ready for match funding opportunities as they come down the line, whether it's for children and family mental health or for other purposes. Also, to be able to support the navigation center should another site be identified and there's an immediate need to move forward. But again, I think we're going to be making a lot of those decisions judiciously as we move forward. And just, I'm hoping we can also constrain costs. The last thing I heard from a local contractor, fairly good sized contractor, was that some costs are coming down. Not for materials, but for construction labor. So that's at least a hopeful sign. I'm hoping that escalation doesn't continue on the same trajectory we've been seeing for the last couple, three years.
What is the urgency or the timeline on us making this decision?
So Commissioner Wise, great, great question. So I think that the urgency, I would say, particularly first around the EOC, is that, as I mentioned, time is ticking with the fact that we're going to one run out of federal dollar timeframe. So that's concerning to me. I think in addition, just not to, Commissioner Rose was right, perhaps costs will go down. I'm just going with what I hear from our contractors. I'm scared if things continue to go up and we're not moving forward. And we have clearly seen with all of the projects, the time that it takes, right, to get all of these things going. So, so that one, I think, I feel like there is a bit of urgency there, Commissioner Wise, because if we wait too long, we're going to lose opportunities. The same is somewhat true on the CIPs just because of the fact that you certainly could wait. I mean, and, and some of these particularly, like I said, you know, are roofs potentially. And, you know, from a priority standpoint, they're all ready to go. But, you know, obviously, the longer we wait, we can't, can't be able to execute those and those will continue to potentially be a risk. So those, those two areas are concerning and then you kind of roll on the roof. And the same with the historic. And then, of course, you, as I mentioned, on the warming cooling center, you've got, currently out of money. And if we're going to continue to support those efforts, we'll need to know so that April and her team are part of it. So I feel like the recommendations that were made were probably the most critical in terms of urgency around time. But I think the CIP probably has some slippage that could be there, but I would highly recommend not slipping too far on the EOC.
Sure. So I'm wondering, do we need a decision today or can we continue this conversation next week?
So Commissioner Wise and Commissioner Malone, Commissioner George, I'll leave, I'll leave that to you. I, I just put this out there for you if you wanted, so at least you knew the input of the staff. But as we talked before, certainly, we could still come back if we so choose and discuss this further. So I will, it wouldn't, I mean, obviously, a week or two is not going to, it's too much.
And we could also parse it out and make a partial decision if we wanted to go ahead with, say, the EOC funding. We don't have to wait for everything all at once, which would at least allow Public Works to move forward with some of the planning that has to go into the research and not the research, but the engineering and design. And I have a question about the cooling and warming. I know that that's a huge emphasis for the Oregon Health Authority. And I'm a little bit confused as to whether that is an actual mandate because I know that a lot of counties have developed programs in response to the Oregon Health Authority. And I wanted to know what our actual obligation is there, if there is one.
That's a good question, Commissioner Ogierro. I know that OHA has put emphasis and put some guidance in place that didn't exist before in terms of cooling and warming. A lot of what I see with OHA is cooling and warming centers, the daytime centers to ensure that there's a place for folks who have medical equipment or don't have air conditioning and need cooling and severe heat or don't, don't have heat and need a place to go, but not overnight sheltering. And what we've been funding is severe weather overflow sheltering. I do just want to add that as our service providers have reduced capacity and ability to do, to house people in emergency sheltering, not related to weather specifically, the demand is going to be very, very high. And I'm not, we don't know yet what it's going to be like to meet a very increased need. Also, the thresholds at which the Benton County Plan activates are quite cold and intended to bring folks in who otherwise often don't. So we may be looking at a banner year if there is not additional support for our homeless services providers. It could be quite challenging this year.
Thank you. And just one follow up. I know that when Sean spoke, you referred to the fact that there are a lot of funding proposals out there. And so there's just a heck of a lot of uncertainty right now about ability to provide sheltering this shelter season since we're back to a seasonal model. But there are a lot of prospects out there, so there's just a lot of uncertainty. So to me, I think it again speaks to the need for having some dollars that are not committed just so that we can meet community need when it becomes really, and not, and not when it becomes apparent, but before it becomes crisis. So, yeah, thank you.
I, once again, I appreciate the clarity laying out where we are currently. I would echo the comments of the need for significant reserve. And there's a couple of things. We have four major projects, so we don't have funding numbers firmed up, whether it's the courthouse or the EOC. And we're barely two months into a 24-month budget. So having reserves gives us the flexibility to plug holes going forward as. So having reserves gives us the flexibility to plug holes going forward as, as we get numbers firmed up. So I think, yes, I'm comfortable going ahead with, with the proposal. Partly because of significant reserves gives us flexibility to reset our priorities when we have more information.
I too would prefer to make a decision today and I'm comfortable with a proposal, but I'd like to hear from Commissioner Wise.
Thank you. If you two would like to do that, I can do that. I will just share, I guess, my concern. So first, I just want to say that this, all of this work is very smart. It's well thought out. It's strategic. It's prudent. Thank you. Thank you for everyone who spent time working on that. Thing that I don't feel good about is the fact that I, as a commissioner, said, I want to set aside ARPA dollars for this purpose for community members. That's what I, and I'm one commissioner, but that's, that was my intention. And I like to do what I say I'm going to do. And so it doesn't feel good to turn around and say, just kidding, we actually need that money back and we're not going to allocate it. And I know that there was clarity around that it's not a, it's not a promise. Anyway, that's what I'm struggling with. So it has nothing to do with, you know, the solidness of this plan. I get that we have a lot of needs. I just don't feel good about not doing what I said I was going to do.
I would echo that concern, but time and context is constantly changing. And that's the hard part. So I'd be happy to make a motion. I would move that we allocate 4,000, 4,4,802,102 of current unallocated resources from the 2023-25 budget be allocated as follows. 1.1, 1 million, sorry, 752,102 to the Capital Improvement Program, support the recommendation of the CIP Committee. 2,500,000 to provide the gap funding necessary to construct a new emergency operations center on the north side. And as you mentioned, not to exceed. 200,000 to support the ongoing effort for providing a warming and cooling center for the homeless. And 350,000 for a roof replacement for the historic courthouse.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. And again, thank you and your team for making.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It's a huge team effort. This was across all departments. So I don't want to just take, take it all, but lots of work by many people. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will take a 10 minute break here. Couple of things. So mixed up is 5.1, an update from the Economic Development Office. Jerry Sorki, I think is here. And then consent calendar and a couple of proclamations. And then we will get to the public hearings probably shortly before noon. So have a 10 minute break, get back here at 11:20. Next up is 5.1, update from Corvallis Benton County Economic Development Office.
Thank you. I'm Paul Bala, the city's community development director. And I'm here for a couple of reasons. One is to introduce our new economic development manager, Christopher Jacobs. And the second is, we did some reorganization before this to move economic development into the community development department. So it's now in my department. So if there's any questions on that. I will say, I know you're running a little behind today. We might be able to help you speed up again here because we're scheduled to be at the chamber speaking at noon. So we're rocking and rolling too.
Pleasure to meet all of you. My name is Christopher Jacobs. I've assumed the economic development manager position for the city of Corvallis. Before that, I've spent the last decade in Michigan, working for City of Ypsilanti and Township Downtown Development Authority. So doing economic development and planning for about a decade. I've worked with lots of small business owners and many different types of communities with different development needs and opportunities. So I've really enjoyed getting to know everyone in the first few weeks that I've been in the community, making those relationships that will be so important for the work that we're going to be doing. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Good morning. I can, I can keep this train rolling if that works. And then we could hit questions whenever you want. Just let me know. I wanted to just give a quick summary of some of the projects that the office has been working on. So as you may recall, last year, we helped with the creation of the Philomath Enterprise Zone. We issued our first enterprise zone approval for a business that is expanding in Philomath. That was about a year ago. And we've, we've since worked with two other businesses and really actively working with two other businesses in Philomath on taking advantage of the enterprise zones. We're happy to see that, that economic development tool to be used. We were also one of the bars on the chart that you saw during the last presentation as recipients of ARPA funds. So Corvallis Benton County Economic Development Office received 275,000 from the commissioners to implement a business grant program. So of that 275,000, 260,000 is going directly into, directly going directly to businesses in our county as $10,000 grants. We held our first round of applications, which wrapped up August 7th. And out of that first round, we'll be awarding approximately 18 grants. Our round two is scheduled to wrap up September 13th, where we will award the remainder of the funds. And we're doing, the applications are occurring on a lottery basis. So the concept with this is that we allow for applications to be submitted over several weeks. It is not first come, first served so that we can try to reach as many people as possible. And then we run a lottery to award those grants. And so we've been working with Central Wilton Credit Union as our partner for this business grant program. The program's going full steam now and we anticipate that all of those funds will be distributed to small businesses as that term is defined here in Benton County by the end of the month. So those are really like the two main projects that, that I would highlight from the office. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I will say hello. And it's nice to meet you, Christopher. Nancy Wise, we met sort of on the virtual. I got to sit in on your interview. So it's nice to see you in person.
Thank you.
I can just have one question, and that is, I know that we are really working to make sure that a chunk of the money and time goes to rural Benton County and, or at least outside of Corvallis, not necessarily rural, small cities as well. And that downtown development is of interest in all of our small cities, whether it's Monroe, Deer Village, Corvallis for sure. And so at some point, I would love to hear from you all about that. Corvallis for sure. And so at some point I would love to hear from you all about that emphasis. As we're focusing on our downtown vitality in our towns across the county.
Yeah, we, we definitely have that as a priority. That's one of the first priorities I had when I took over economic development in my department. In fact, starting with the interview panel, we included interview panel recipient, participants who are not just city folks. And I think that's the, that's sort of the philosophy we want to go with going forward is that this is really, it's a joint office. Similar to, you know, now we have the other joint office that works the other direction with houselessness. And just as, and I think we are going to have that same kind of a relationship.
I guess I'd say, well, welcome. I was a little disappointed that it took so long to get this position filled. Because I think there were probably opportunities that were missed, but hopefully. Get things cranked up and make sure that we're not missing opportunities. And this is a little bit of a random thought, but I think it was Kate Porsche's. Program of e-bike subsidies with Pacific Power. And not a huge project, but I think it had a real, a real impact for low income folks to be able to get around town comfortably. And I would just, since the program's very well laid out, how to, how to do it. Maybe take a look and see if there's a round two in our future.
And I will address the length of time. Part of what has changed with the move is that, that length of time was for the reorganization piece of things. Once it actually got moved over to CD, we moved pretty quickly. What had happened over the past few years is that the economic development office started picking up a lot of other tasks like climate change and things from the city side. And it was, I think it was kind of diluting a little bit of some of that economic development focus. So we're now going to get a little bit more purpose driven on that. So it was really, the issue was not the economic development half. It was dealing with the pieces that were remaining in the city manager's office that was what caused the delay. But we're, we're looking to make up time too.
One other project related question, and that is the funds that came from the legislature through Senator Gelsner Blue and for Food Hub. That's another project that I get questions about in the community on a somewhat regular basis. So I'd love to know where we're headed in.
Yeah, well, we have the, the draft sub-recipient agreement with the county right now waiting signature. There's an RFP for gap analysis to be released this week. And we're going to give that a month and identify a contractor based on that RFP. We've just convened the working group that's been meeting for the past two years and really leading the charge on the project. To review the plan moving forward. They're all very supportive of content of the RFP and the timeline to have those funds obligated by June 2024, out of the deadline. So that project is moving forward and we're really excited to see how it could take shape. I do want to comment that, you know, there really are no shortage of opportunities from the work plan. I became very familiar with some of the, both the opportunities in the city of Corvallis and the other communities in Benton County. So excited to hit the ground running.
I might add that we, we have approved the sub-recipient agreements. I think we're putting that on. So basically now the thing.
All right. Well, I think this is a nice introduction and I would invite you to maybe come back in six or eight weeks. With more program specifics and this is what, what's in the works. This is what we're looking at kind of report. Various reasons. You don't have a lot of time today and plus Christopher, you're kind of new to the job. So I'll give you a little time to settle in and figure out, you know, picking up some projects that were in place. And maybe give us an idea of what's in our, potentially what's in our future. But and Paul, I appreciate you coming and saying how the reorganization affects this, this effort. That's helpful. There's no other questions. Thank you for being succinct and keeping things moving today. But I really mean invite you to get on our calendar relatively soon to have a more in-depth report. You gave us a nice sample today, but yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I hope it was at least somewhat interesting listening to our discussions of all the plans and the works on the county side.
My other hat was very interested in the discussion we've had there.
Yes.
Next up, item number six, consent calendar. I hear a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Number seven, we seem to have lost Brian Lee on our proclamation. Maybe we'll. Oh, are, are you, Brian, are you ready to read the proclamation?
Commissioner Malone, can you give me one more second so I can actually pull over so I can read the proclamation?
Okay. I heard something about needing a little more time to get set up. We could do 7.2. Brian, I'll fill in here with proclaiming September 17th, 2023 is institution day in Benton County. In the matter, in the matter of proclaiming September 17th, 2023 is constitution day in Benton County. Our founding fathers ordained and established the constitution for the United States of America and signed it on September 17th, 1787. At the time of adopting the constitution, states expressed a desire for further declaratory clauses to be added. Known as the Bill of Rights amendments, one through 10, December 15th, 1791. Subsequent amendments enacted throughout the years strengthened the rights of citizens and ensured their right to vote. Amendment 13, section one declared that neither slavery nor involuntary servitude, except as a punishment for crime. Where of the party shall have been duly convicted, shall exist within the United States or any place subject to its jurisdiction. December 6th, 1865. Amendment 14, section one declared that all persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof. Are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside, July 9th, 1868. Amendment 15, section one declared that the rights of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States. Or by any state on the account of race, color, or previous condition of servitude. February 3, 1870. Amendment 19 declared the rights of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States. Or by any state on the account of sex, August 18th, 1920. Amendment 24 declared the rights of citizens of the, of the US to vote in any primary or other election without denial or abridgement. By the US or any state for the failure to pay any poll tax or other tax, January 23, 1964. It is of great importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles in the constitution, the bill of rights and subsequent amendments. The 236th anniversary of the signing of the original constitution provides an opportunity for all US residents to reflect on the rights and privileges of citizenship. As well as its responsibilities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that September 17th, 2023 is recognized as constitution day in Benton County. And citizens are urged and encouraged to reflect on the benefits of our constitution, the bill of rights and subsequent amendments. And the privileges and responsibilities of American citizenships. Adopted fifth day of September, 2023.
So moved. Second.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right. Brian Lee, are you ready for the proclamation as declaring September is national preparedness month?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. In the matter of proclaiming September as national preparedness month in Benton County. Whereas national preparedness month occurring annually in September since 9/11 creates an ideal opportunity for community members, businesses and visitors of Benton County, Oregon. To join other community members across the United States and preparing their homes, businesses and communities for any type of emergency, including natural disasters. The US Department of Homeland Security and other federal, state and local officials and the private sector are working to prevent and respond to all types of emergencies. And when individuals take responsibility for preparing their families and their communities, the chance of survival and return to normalcy following a disaster is greatly increased. And the United Nations climate study and other research indicates that the impact of climate change will lead to significantly more frequent and more severe disasters. And the Benton County Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Division partners with federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private and volunteer agencies. To inform individuals on how to take action through our community education campaigns and our local volunteer programs such as community emergency response team. Red Cross, law enforcement volunteers, amateur radio services and comprehensive planning and coordination efforts. And residents, businesses and visitors of Benton County are urged to plan ahead for disasters and encourage their family and friends to do so also. By participating in neighborhood preparedness activities, registering their contact information in the local emergency notification system, Lynn Benton Alert. And participating in annual readiness events. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Benton County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim September 2023 as national preparedness month. And encourage all community members, businesses and visitors to develop their own emergency preparedness plan.
My move that we proclaim September as national preparedness, preparedness month in Benton County, proclamation number 2023 dash zero one four. Second.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Right. Next up is two public hearings. All right. Public hearing number one is the matter of a public hearing regarding the vacation of portion of North 20th Place County Road number. 26632 Joe Martis. Morning, Joe.
Morning.
It's still morning. We're, we're, we're moving, moving right along now.
We're back to the North 20th Place Vacation, the end of that street. This was petitioned by Glorietta Bay. Those are the people that went to put in the recreational vehicle park. Off of 19th Street and the other vacater is McCabe Trust. Gloria Bay will get 40 feet of that right away because that's what they owned or was vested to. And then the other part is 20 feet, which is actually to the McCabe, they get that part to them. There'll be reservation on that to reserve all future utility adjustments for the city of public, city of Philoma. And then the public franchise utilities are reserved in there because they're actually in that area. So we will leave them and reserve right away for them on that. Of the position of the, the new driveway, actually part of it is built, not with asphalt, it's rock. I was kind of surprised that they were way ahead of themselves, but they have not connected it to 19th Street, which they can't even allow anyway until they build it to our, our standard. So we're watching them. But they do have gravel in there, ready to put the driveway in. It actually is in a good spot because it's on a curve. So you can actually see both ways. If you'll notice the way 20th Street came in at a very sharp angle. County does not have those kinds of designs. We don't like that kind of access to a street because it's very dangerous. So they're going to straighten out their access there. So there will be a building in this vacation on a portion of the vacation. That will be on the portion that Glorietta Bay will get. It's only about five feet, it looks like on their maps. And they gave a really good presentation on what they were going to do. That was from Glorietta Bay. That was the exhibit B. Of course, that's the RV park, everything associated, not part of the vacation is through the city of Philomas. If you so approve the vacation, I'm in contact with the city manager, Chris Berkman. And I will provide him all the documentation that we have here. And they will either do a concurrent. So that's what that part is for. They have to have something to concur with. So we have to go through our process first. So I've done one of these through the city of Corvallis. I will provide to the city of Philomas documentation that Corvallis has used just to kind of help the city out. That documentation, they don't have to use it. I mean, they're, they're, you know, they can do whatever they want to, but I. And I hope that they kind of follow the same suit and get that recorded so that they have to finalize all the vacation. Even though the road is ours, we do the vacation, but they, it's inside the city limits. So they just have to do a concurrent. This means agree. And basically I'm reading all their paperwork through the planning department. It's kind of the whole idea. The vacation part is part of the conditions of approval through the city of Philomas.
Any questions? I think the commissioners got several emails a couple of weeks ago, caught up with concerns about this process. And I'm assuming you got those emails.
I handled those. I think the, the citizen was a little confused on what a road vacation is. Road vacation means the road is no longer public, that little portion. And he was talking about a through road. This can no longer be a through road anymore. So because the Gloria Bay, the residential, the RV part. Their access will come off on 19th Street. They'll no longer need to have any access off of 20th Place. And so I kind of put it in kind of simple terms. I, I know when somebody's doing something, everybody gets a little excited about that. So I wanted to make sure that the person knew that the road is no longer going to be a through road. That was his main concern.
So, so that fits with owners' desires.
Yes, there will be. I talked to the owner of the Gloria Bay. They're not here today. I'm not sure if they'll show up or not on visual. But he said because of the city's. But he said because of the city's requirements, because the city's going to have a lot of requirements for them to actually do a lot of this stuff, you know, there'll be trails and sidewalks. I believe there's another requirement of the city before the vacated area is to have an emergency vehicle turn around. Right now, they're actually using a gate off of Twentieth Place. I think that's where they're coming in to do all of their construction. Of course, when they get the new driveway built, they won't need to come off that anymore. So that's kind of where they're headed. And the county has gone through this. We recommend the vacation of that right away.
I was fairly sure there was some misunderstanding of what was going on, but I just wanted to make sure that the people who had concerns got the correct information. So thank you.
I might ask, need to ask if anybody.
All right. This is a public hearing. Now is the time for any members of the public to comment. Doesn't sound like there's any public comment.
One thing I would, I think it is important is to make sure that those letters and emails that were submitted to the board actually become part of the record of this public hearing. Erica, they'll need to be forwarded to you so that they become part of the record. I think there was just a little misunderstanding on individuals who submitted those, how to get them to you for consideration. So we want to make sure that those, that their written comments are part of the record.
And I think all there, at least the ones I saw, came in on August eighteenth. I will forward those to you, Erica. Remind myself. I think we're ready for a motion.
I move to pursuant to O R S three six eight point three two six to three six eight point three four one to vacate a portion of North Twentieth Place County Road number two six six three two as described in order number D twenty twenty-three dash zero seventy. Second.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. That wasn't too painful, was it? All right. Next up is our second public hearing. For City of Adair U G B expansion, Tuesday, September fifth, twenty twenty-three, at eleven o'clock or later. Is a time set for a public hearing to consider the approval of a comprehensive plan, map, and zone map amendments to expand the city of Adair Village U G B by point one two acres, acre, and to amend the county's zoning map from exclusive farm use to urban residential fifty acre minimum parcel size. First up, the staff planner will present the report.
First of all, I want to thank the commissioners for designating this legislative action back in June. Made the process a lot easier and quicker. This is a cross-jurisdictional legislative action because the city of Adair is going through the same public hearing process as we are here. And we've had our public hearings for Planning Commission, planning, both planning commissions have motioned their recommendation for approval of this legislative action. We didn't get any input other than from Oregon Department of Transportation, ODOT, who's in favor of this. And as we kind of explained when we first introduced this to you, this is kind of a map correction. This is a small sliver of ODF and W's property that actually extended along the entire southern border of a right of way of Ryle's Road. But this process is a little bit different because the other parts that were part of the ODF and W property were actually annexed into the city in two thousand and ten. So this was a leftover piece. So essentially, this is kind of just a map correction. We missed it on the U G B amendment that we did earlier this year. And we're just kind of coming back to bring this in, attach it to the forty-two acre piece that was adopted and approved earlier this year and part of annexation at a later date.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have testimony in favor of the application. Zoom that to you, Pat.
Because if you look at ODF and W and C N and Christian's properties on those maps, when Ryle's got put in, they basically put ten feet of their property on the other side of it. And so we're getting, cleaning this little strip up. And yeah, we had it in our maps and all the U G Bs. We just didn't write the description and that we were told was how we do it. So we learned something here. So thank you guys for doing this quick.
All right. A little quick arithmetic. I think we're talking about four thousand square feet in that neighborhood. A little earlier, we were talking about buildings that were larger than that by quite a bit.
Really, this, this will be kind of for the county because we, we took our standards and put in on Ryle's on your road, a plan or strip and a bike lane. And this allows us to do that. So. It's, it's, Ryle's, yeah, yeah, it's yours. And I can give you the plan or strip, let me tell you. But no, yeah, this is, this is just, we're putting it in our guidelines and we do want to continue the bike lane.
No doubt really was in favor of this too because extending or the work that Pat just mentioned along Ryle's Road gives a kind of a safe off ramp to the bicyclists that are on Ninety-Nine West. As they're coming up, instead of going right, staying on Ryle's Road, they, this will create in the bike lane to be a more of a safe path.
Any questions? Thank you. Next up, any testimony from persons opposed to this application? Doesn't sound like there's any opposition. Next is testimony from any representative of any other government body. Very none. I think we're ready for a motion.
I would move that with the Board of County Commissioners direct staff to prepare an ordinance to accept the county planning commission's recommendation to approve the comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment proposed in legislative file number L U twenty-three dash zero two nine. Says with the following specification, assuming that just means the specifications in the packet.
I'll hear a second.
A second. So it says example inclusion of the point one two acres. Do we need to add that? Okay.
And motion's been moved and seconded. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
So what will happen is planning will bring back an ordinance because in order to change the U G B, we need to affect that to an ordinance and that'll come back in two weeks. And then second read will be two weeks after that, and then thirty days after that it becomes effective. These are technicalities, but I, I, I preach to the choir, aren't I?
All right. Thank you. And next up is new business. And I think I'll shuffle the schedule. So we'll do nine point two recognition of service at NIPA. I understand you are thinking about retiring.
Yeah. No, I am, took a position up in Sandy as a senior planner. This would be my last contact with you guys professionally. But I, I would, I would just like to say, give me a minute to just express my thanks to the commission that had the foresight and the city managers to create this position. Because I, I think, I think it was a tremendous move for these cities and what we were able to get done in five years. I mean, I can't believe I've been here five years, but the amount of work that we did, and I think moving these cities forward. I said this in a couple of different places, but I think, you know, updating the master, master plans of all three jurisdictions, all three small cities, completely redoing two of them. And the fact that I said that I probably wrote more code in these five years than I did in the last fifteen. So that's a lot of work and a lot of kind of massaging the codes, bringing them up to date. They were far out of date. And I think it just really helped guide these cities in the right direction and kind of set them up for at least the next ten years in good place. And all of the supervisor positions that I have, one of the, one of the, I think, beliefs that I have is I'm going to go from four bosses or supervisors to one. I hope it's easier. But they've all been super fantastic to work with. And I think all the cities are in great hands for what they're doing now and what's going to happen in the near future. Thank you for all your support. I know you've always, you've always had our back and have the city's small, small cities backs. And I hope some of what we were doing was getting back to you because I, I think it was, because a lot of it was trend setting. And, and just, just knowing that we always had your support, I think, really helped us get through it and move quickly. Thanks. I'll miss, I will miss Benton County. I'll miss Carvallos. Great friends like Pat and Chris.
Well, thank you. I remember it was a little bit of a leap of faith to create this position with, in partnership with the small cities. And I think it did exactly what we wanted it to do in terms of bringing all the jurisdictions together and aligning our code a bit better and greatly improving the understanding of the joint responsibilities that we have when it comes to planning for the benefit of our communities. So thank you for taking on this bridge work. I understand that the small cities are going to hire their own person moving forward. So it's, it's been a good role and we've filled it ably. So thank you very much for your service and best of luck in Sandy. I'll miss seeing you at the dog park.
Yeah, true. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate you developing this position and filling the real need that we had and we're not addressing. And I think your efforts in the last five years helped standardize the codes around the county so that we're all on the same page and bringing a real level of professionalism to our efforts. So thank you for that. This was, this was kind of a unique position. And I think you have really advanced our planning efforts in these three jurisdictions. Best luck in Sandy. Maybe you're a skier and now are close to adulthood. So good luck on your future efforts. Thank you on behalf of Benton County.
You so much.
I'll echo what my colleagues here have said. Thank you for your service to Benton County and the cities. Thank you for all the impacts that you've had and for all the codes you've written. That just sounds, I mean, thank you, but that sounds horrible to me. Like writing code is like really, really low down on the list of things I'd ever want to do. So thank you for doing that. And I just, I wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you. This is a simple letter requested by a community member, Naomi Shadwick from Alsey Community Effort and the Alsey Hope Grange to support their proposal to T-Mobile's Hometown Grants Program to provide upgrades to the Grange Hall so that it can be, can used for community service projects, youth events, and local community meetings. As you know, they are an unincorporated area, so having this kind of community meeting space is important so that they can gather and collaborate on projects.
Yes.
Thanks.
I will move to
approve the letter of support for the Alsey Hope Grange to submit a proposal to the T-Mobile Hometown Grants Program.
One of you is going to have to make a second.
Wait. Do you want to make the motion?
I would move that we support the letter, that we agree to the letter of support for Alsey Community Effort to fund the project to be submitted to T-Mobile Hometown Grants Program.
Second.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
How many commissioners does it take to come up with a motion?
Two or three. Number ten, Old Business Sustainable Materials Management Plan, final draft request proposal. Recommended next steps, Darren Nichols. And Daniel.
And I just want to say that I'm probably going to have to leave in twenty minutes. And please don't take offense if I step out. Rick Crager will also be leaving at the same time. So apologies in advance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Christopher Ojero, for the heads up. Good morning. I hope you can hear me okay.
You're a little soft.
Okay. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to join remotely today. I'm recovering from whatever back-to-school bug I picked up from the kids. So I don't want to share that. And I appreciate you letting us join remotely. So I think we can get this done pretty quickly. You have in front of you a packet with a number of items that includes a final RFP. You've seen this a few times now, different iterations. different iterations as it has, um, evolved with the help of a temporary committee. And I want to say special thanks to Daniel and the committee for helping to get this final draft in front of you today. We hope that, uh, with your agreement and perhaps any final edits you have, this will be ready to release as soon as we can get the RFP out on the street, which I believe that the next opportunity is next Tuesday. If I'm not mistaken. You also have a, a proposed ad hoc committee structure. Um, what you don't see there are any individual names that those conversations are still unfolding, but you see, I, what feels to us like an appropriate committee structure for an ad hoc committee that would advise the board and work with a consulting team in the community to develop the Sustainable Materials Management Plan. You also have a draft committee charge, um, which would welcome your thoughts, feedback and guidance on. It's a fairly simple charge, but we think it, um, at least gives the group some initial direction and, um, sets the scope of their work. And then also you'll see toward the end of, uh, the materials packet, a draft listening session concept. So we tried to put some details into what a board hosted listening session could look and feel like for engaging with the community and eliciting constructive, um, advice, guidance and preferences from community members for next steps. So, uh, what we're asking the board to do today is to take four specific actions. Those motions are laid out in order, um, one through four. And, uh, so I think that's really our business today. It's those, it's those four items, um, laid out in front of you. Daniel, do you have anything to add, um, or any additional context for the RFP specifically?
The, the only addition for the RFP that's not included here that I wanted to note is a community member caught a typo, uh, a reference to a transit, uh, document, um, which was part of our, uh, initial like formatting for this RFP. We use a, a transit RFP as a drafting point. Um, so the conclusion of this would be to delete that, uh, typo and reference to the, the transit, uh, document in there.
Daniel, can you point us to the specific page where that shows up?
Yes, let me pull that up here. So that will be, when, when you're looking at the RFP pages, um, it'll be page nineteen or page one ninety-seven of the packet. In the section E, selection and negotiations, number two, at the end of that, uh, point, it says, "In nature of the transit program services." So it should just be "In nature of the services."
That was a good catch.
This is probably a good point to thank Gary Stock, I've advanced Croney for helping us with a template. We feel really good about, um, the, the template that we're working from, but, um, obviously there was a couple of old orders that we didn't catch. So thank you, Daniel, for that.
Always the danger with templates. I, my only question is again about, um, the point that community member Ken Eklund raised. He's raised it before. Um, I know that the statistic as it's used this time in the document is a little bit different from the way it's been used in the past. But, um, can we really make these kinds of definitive statements about greenhouse gas emissions and where they are incurred in the, lifecycle of solid waste, uh, based on that twenty fifteen DEQ report? And, uh, I wouldn't mind double checking that because I don't want to minimize the emissions from the landfill. We know it's possible to greatly diminish them if we manage differently, but, um, I still don't think it helps us at all to minimize the current impact.
I, I can speak to that just briefly. Uh, this is something that we've, uh, kind of worked on and double checked. And really I think the intention here is to call out the real benefits of looking upstream, and not to minimize the impacts downstream. Uh, but certainly, uh, one of the key parts of this RFP is recognizing the impacts that can be avoided by, uh, changing our framing and being more inclusive of other lifecycle phases. Um, so that's certainly the intent here. As for the data, it's, it's pretty straightforward, uh, in, um, the DEQ information provided here. Um, and DEQ, uh, staff have often framed it in this way. They usually, um, will frame it as ninety-nine percent of emissions happen upstream from the consumer and one percent of emissions happen downstream. So this is, uh, intended to really just use DEQ's information that have already been, uh, provided. And do so in, in a way that, uh, helps the reader understand that the ninety-nine percent is not a, uh, an exaggeration or an estimate, um, and that it is, uh, coming from actual data in the greenhouse gas emissions inventory. But we have, uh, double checked that, uh, number and I'm pretty confident in, in using that in this document.
Thank you, Daniel.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification and trying to, uh, answer constituents' concern and so, um, appreciate you doing your, um, homework. So, any other questions for, uh, Daniel or Darren?
Not on the RFP. I think that it's come a long ways and, um, it looks very robust. I'd be happy to make a motion on that element. I move to accept the revised request for proposals and direct staff to issue the request for proposals broadly with the intent to invite responses from national and international qualified firms and teams.
Second.
Um, all in favor of the motion? Um, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have another motion. That was one of, four.
With respect to the membership of the groups, um, moving on, uh, under the list of governmental agencies, it includes Benton County. And, uh, one of the groups that I see missing in that particular list is that it doesn't include our health department. And, um, so I would like to see public health participation.
Yes, good catch. I think we've, we envision this project very much as an inclusive project for all county departments, um, all relevant county departments. Commissioner Rosero, so the health department certainly needs to be part of that conversation. So does Public Works. There's, there, there are a number of departments, I think the board's office, the sustainability program, um, need to be included. So we envision this really being an all hands effort from Benton County. And I think that will be determined a little bit in the revised scope of work, but there's going to be, you know, an opportunity for a number of our departments to get involved. And we're very much appreciative of that countywide support.
I assume this is a work in progress and, like is, uh, been mentioned, uh, additions are going to be made in the future.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm having difficulty hearing you in this and I'm not sure why. I cut about half of your question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just, uh, making sure that this is a work in progress and, uh, if the agencies or individuals need to be, added to the, to the group, that that's, uh, the plan going forward.
Yes, thank you very much for that question. This is a starting point for a structure that I anticipate will morph, uh, and change as needed throughout this, the length of the project. If, if you're comfortable generally with the structure, um, it gives us a little bit to get started with. And we would like to come back to you with a complete list of names, at least kind of starting group of names. I'd say about half or two thirds of these, uh, organizations have committed to participate. But we don't have a list of specific names to bring to you today. So with your permission, would love to hear feedback, uh, like we've just heard about kind of who's missing from the list or how you might like to see it shaped differently. And then use that to bring back an actual list of names. So we know who would be participating from each of those organizations. And I might add just kind of one other request would be for the board to think about, um, perhaps appointing a chair or some kind of leadership structure that you would like to lead the effort on your behalf. It, it's feeling more as we kind of get into this and see the size and scope of this advisory group. It will take some specific intentional leadership, um, obviously from staff certainly, but also I think from the committee itself. And, uh, we would like with your permission, a little bit more time to structure that in a way that maximizes the group's ability to move forward as, as a group.
Darren, with, with this larger group, would it make sense to think about having a executive committee? In addition to having a chair?
I think that makes a lot of sense, Mr. Chair. Um, executive committees can be very helpful in terms of kind of streamlining the leadership without having to involve the entire committee. But I also know that executive committees are best when they're selected by their peers. So I would suggest that we figure out the full group and then decide from that group, what is kind of the best mix of both representative, uh, positions, but also, um, kind of the right size and, and makeup of an executive committee. So thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you.
I just wanted to check, Commissioner Rosero, does that address your concern about the health department?
Yes, um, I, I do believe it does. I just want to make sure that it's on the record that, um, environmental health is one of the aspects that we need to take, uh, think about when it comes to solid, uh, to the materials management plan.
All right, uh, are we, uh, ready for a motion on, uh, number two?
Sure. I move to accept the proposed committee structure and direct staff to prepare and present to the board of commissioners, a list of proposed ad hoc committee members consistent with the proposed structure.
Second.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion number two carries. Moving on to number three.
Okay, thank you. So you'll see here for number three, there is, um, a little bit of explanation of existing or kind of previous county policy and, uh, pulling from cons, the bylaws for the Solid Waste Advisory Council and also the disposal site advisory committee and pulling that into a charge for this new ad hoc committee, which, um, we're suggesting that, um, that, uh, be used, uh, kind of as a, as a starting point. Again, I think there's probably a little bit of room to massage this. But at least from the start, if, if you're comfortable with this, or if you'd like to make changes to it now, that's fine too. But we feel like this gives us, um, a starting point from which to have, uh, more specific conversations with potential committee members so that they know what will be expected of them, uh, before they make the commitment. So I think, um, following on the, the motion that you just passed for the committee structure, this now helps those, um, organizations decide who best to appoint, to put a name in the box and gives them a sense also for what the board is hopeful, um, from them in terms of commitment. So, um, that's, that's what you have in front of you today is a draft charge. Um, and if you feel comfortable with this, this gives us then something to, um, put forward to the organizations and individuals that we're asking to serve on the committee.
Uh, any questions on number three? Committee structure.
Can I make a motion? I move to accept the ad hoc Sustainable Materials Management Committee charge and direct staff to draft for board approval revised DSAC bylaws consistent with the ad hoc Sustainable Materials Management Committee charge and Oregon revised statute four, five, nine point three, two, five. Further move to direct staff to schedule monthly DSAC meetings and create meeting agendas to fulfill Benton County's statutory responsibilities in October, November and December twenty twenty-three.
Second, and then I have a clarifying question. Will there, given that the committee that is to be appointed as an ad hoc committee, will it have bylaws or some sort of a charter that we will also approve?
No, the charge, um, functions as the marching orders, if you will, for the ad hoc committee. Uh, because it's an ad hoc committee, there are no, there is no bylaws necessitated. The anticipation, anticipation that I've talked with Darren and Daniel about is, once we move past the, um, plan development stage to where we have a more permanent solid waste management committee, that committee will have bylaws.
Got it.
I might just add one little bit of context. Thank you, Vance, for your help, uh, putting this together and thinking this through previously.
This charge plus the scope of work, I think, combines sort of the bylaws, if you will, or the, at least gives the, the, um, the job, the responsibilities for the committee members. So it's kind of that two-part. One is this general charge with the, um, revised scope of work, which the board will have an opportunity to look at and approve, um, once we have a contractor selected.
Okay. Sounds good.
Motion number three has been, um, moved and seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Number three carries. Number four, structure and facilitate a listening session for the board and the public.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is really the suggestion, I think originally, of Commissioner Wise and then, um, kind of followed on with some recommendations from Commissioner Rosero and Commissioner Malone, recognizing the need for the board of commissioners of Benton County to connect with the community around these issues. So what we've tried to do here is a couple of things. One is set a, establish a forum that would enable the board of commissioners to really do just that, listen to the community. Uh, we're suggesting that that be a facilitated, um, listening session. And importantly, that it be focused on constructive, forward-looking community suggestions for how best to, um, engage and develop and implement a sustainable materials management plan that is appropriate for Benton County and also gives us the best chance to change the way that Oregonians think about their materials and how they handle them really from cradle to grave. So, this is, this is at least as much art as science, if it's, if not more. And, um, what we've tried to do here is set up enough time and a location and an agenda for a listening session that would enable you all to, to really hear from community members, would also give you a chance to respond to those. But rather than, rather than structuring this as a debate, it, it truly is set up. There, it's intended to be a, an opportunity for the board to listen to feedback from the community.
Uh, question, Darren, when you, um, could you speak to, uh, what you're thinking about for a facilitator?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Wise. Um, there are a few options who could help us have this dialogue. I would turn to, in fact, have, have turned to, um, our colleagues of at Oregon Consensus. Robin Harkless is one of the senior facilitators at Oregon Consensus on staff there at Portland State who helped facilitate the policy dialogue around, um, Senate Bill five eighty-two, the, the Recycling and, um, Modernization Act. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not getting that correct, but, um, uh, I think there's some skilled facilitation and some, um, topical expertise that could help us have that conversation, I think, pretty effectively. So that's one option. Another would be to turn to one of the affiliated practitioners on, um, Oregon Consensus's list, who could help us with that. I suppose a third default would be to facilitate that dialogue using existing staff or someone else close. who could help us with that. Exposed a third default would be to facilitate that dialogue using existing staff or someone else closer to home. But we're certainly open to suggestions for, you know, what's the right feel and fit for that individual.
Thank you. So if we were to go with the first that you mentioned, do you know, is there a cost to that? Is that already part of, has that been budgeted for or?
Thank you. I presume there would be a cost to that for a one-day facilitation. It's a, you know, it's a fairly reasonable addition to the cost. I think with your permission, it should be viewed as part of the budget for the Sustainable Materials Management Plan. It's likely that we're gonna need some specific outside expertise for things like this going forward as well. So it would be good to get someone on board that we feel comfortable working with and can help the community have this part of the conversation.
Thank you.
Yep.
I like the idea of the facilitated effort. And these are obviously issues that the community is interested in and some guidance, I think, is neutral third-party handling this, I think, makes sense. It sounds like you see this as a one, one-time effort. If it seems like there's more interest in continuing the discussion, would it be possible to have a second session? Would that be, would that be part of the plan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that's a, I think that's a great question and a good idea. We would retain them to help with this listening session, but with the understanding that we might want them to come back and help with some other strategic advice or perhaps to convene a second or third listening session. We're being a little bit careful and part of the reason for suggesting that we look to Oregon Consensus is that one or more other community engagement firms may be wanting to put a bid in, in response to the RFP. So, and I know that Oregon Consensus would not put in a response to an RFP. So in some ways, we're just asking for some third-party help to get us started with this part of the conversation. But also, we will be encouraging any respondents to the RFP to include this kind of expertise in their team so that Benton County can stay connected to the community as the SMMP work unfolds.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? If not, I would look for a motion on number four.
Move to accept the listening session concept and direct staff to select a facilitator and begin planning the event.
I will second that. All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else? Darren?
No, just a big thank you. And I should turn to Daniel and see if there's anything we missed or anything we should add at this point.
Not that I can think of at the moment. Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Well, just a general comment. I really appreciate this thoughtful process and, you know, you've been before us several times and seems like you make good progress refining the path forward. So thank you and your team for this, for this effort. I appreciate the considerable work that's gone into the puzzle to get us to this phase.
Okay, yeah, thank you. You're very welcome and thank you for your support.
Hope you're healthy very soon, Darren.
Thank you, you and me both.
All right. Coming along to my, one of my favorite items, number 11. Other, is there? Is there anything else for the good of the order? Not, I will come to my very favorite. You are adjourned. And thank you for a very productive morning.